Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. You've seen the agenda for the day. We're gonna do a slight modification. We have our friends from KPMG with us a little early, so we're going to allow that part of our meeting to go forward and then we will pick up after that presentation on our regular agenda. So with that, Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, staff, and those citizens that are with us by way of Channel 47, I believe. Good afternoon. As Mr. Jordan indicated, we have with us this afternoon members of the KPMG Audit Firm. KPMG is our independent auditors who conduct the financial statement audit and the compliance audit of both Norfolk Public Schools and the City of Norfolk. So we have here with us this afternoon a partner from the firm of KPMG, Ms. Cheryl Sistros, and one of the managers, senior managers with KPMG, Mr. Archie Simmons, is here to share with the board really an overview of a very significant accounting and reporting requirement change sent down from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is basically that group that determines what the reporting requirements are for state and local governments. What you're gonna hear from Ms. Sistros today is not a reporting requirement unique to Norfolk City Schools, but it's one that is being implemented across the country for all state and local governments that participate in certain qualifying pension plans. So with that being said, I'll ask Cheryl to please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for allowing us to come in and talk with you a little bit about our good friend GASB-68, which you're gonna hear me speak about today. Where this presentation sort of began was, as you know, the School Board has an audit committee, and Ms. Doyle and Reverend Haywood are the current members of the audit committee. And in the last couple of years, a couple of times, I've talked with you about, you know, the new accounting standards that are coming down the pike, and there are a lot of changes that are, you know, in place and coming in governmental accounting, you know, this year and over the next few years. You know, in the meeting that we had to plan for the audit for this year, for the first time, you know, we were starting to get a little bit of a clearer picture on what the numbers would look like with respect to GASB-68. And so the members of the committee felt like it might be helpful because it is such a significant change in the way the schools' financial statements would look if we gave you a little advance feel for what is gonna happen with the numbers when we implement GASB-68. So we're gonna start with... Does this work? Where do I need... This way? Is it off? Yeah, there we go. Helps if you turn it on. There we go. Okay. So we're gonna start with a brief summary, and I'm gonna try to be brief, and I'm gonna... I've thought all day long about how do I take this incredibly complicated, multifaceted standard that people in my business, all across the country, have been, you know, working on for months and months and months, and turn it into something that is helpful to you and that, you know, you can understand. So, you know, we'll try that, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about what plans the schools are in, and then I have a slide for you that shows you what the numbers look like. So, so we'll start with a brief discussion of the standard itself. I mean, just to give you a little background, the way pension reporting, and we're talking about the defined benefit pension plans that are in place for the benefit of all the employees of the school system. And the way the accounting worked in the past was focused primarily on funding. And on an annual basis, an actuary would come up with a recommendation based on, you know, assumptions around, you know, mortality and what kind of return we might be getting on assets and payroll increases or decreases that may be occurring, you know, different things that existed in your particular population of employees, and they would make a recommendation on how much the governmental entity needed to contribute to the plan to sort of stay on track, so to speak, okay, in terms of funding these benefits that would be paid out at some point in the future. And as long as you, as a governmental entity, made that contribution, they called it the annual required contribution, as long as you made that ARC, you would not have a liability on your books, okay? And, I mean, you all, as a school system, have historically made the ARC, right? Done your responsible job with respect to funding, and so you did not have a liability on your books. If you compare that to the accounting that's been used in the private sector, the private sector records, you know, on their balance sheet whatever the unfunded pension liability is. So basically, in that case, the actuary goes through and he computes a liability based on the benefits that people have earned today, okay, as they've worked, and then you compare that to the assets that have been set aside in a trust to pay those benefits, and the net number is recorded on their balance sheets, and, you know, in effect, you recognize that expense, you know, as you go, not just the contribution. So what's happening right now with governmental entities is really a convergence with this private sector accounting that's been in place for a long period of time. So what we're gonna do this year is we're gonna take the pension liability that represents all the benefits that have been earned by all the employees in the school system, both retired and active, and we're gonna take that liability, we're gonna subtract out the assets that we've provided already through these ARCs, right, that we've made over the years, and we're gonna record that on the balance sheet. It's a big number. And, you know, we'll take a look at what the number looks like in a minute. So it's a substantial change, okay, all across the United States in the way governmental financial statements look. And, you know, for the Norfolk Public Schools, because of the way your financial statements interact with the city and the arrangements that have been set up, you know, you don't have the school buildings on your books, you don't have, you know, it's, I mean, you all have an interactive relationship, right, where maybe, you know, school systems in other states where the school districts actually have taxing authority and some of that, and borrowing authority, it won't have as big of an impact, right? So for you, you don't maintain a very significant fund balance, it's gonna be gone, you know, and more. So if we wanna take a look at this, you know, we're gonna record a net pension liability on the balance sheet of the schools as of, actually, as of the beginning of the year, we're gonna roll it forward. We're now gonna have pension expense that's based on the benefits that the employees have earned in this current year, not the contribution that you've made, okay? And then there's also gonna be a new line item that you're gonna see that's called deferred inflows and outflows. And basically, what deferred inflows and outflows do is they capture things that really should be recognized over more than one period, right? Like, I mean, I know you all probably don't follow what actuaries are up to, but in the last couple of years, you know, actuaries have done a lot of work with mortality rates, right, and they've basically reached the conclusion that people in the United States generally are living longer. Well, that increases everybody's pension liability, something like that, you don't have to record in the year it happens, right? I mean, those statistics developed over, you know, gradual increases in mortality over a long period of time, and so those are gonna come into your pension expense, you know, over sort of the average life of people that are in the plan. So we'll take those, and we'll sit them in this deferred inflows and outflows, and they won't hit the expense right away, right? They'll come in a little bit at a time. So that's sort of simply, you know, what deferred inflows and outflows are. So the next couple of bullets on this page, and I do only have three slides, so that's good, you know, we're almost done with the first one, talk about a couple of different types of plans, okay? And the schools have, one, they have a plan that falls under bullet two, and a plan that falls under bullet three, okay? And actually, I'm gonna go, I'll go into the details a little bit more later on what that means, but bullet two, an agent multiple plan, is a plan where you fund your liability for your people, right? So it's like having a separate plan. The city's employees in general are in a single employer, which is like, sort of like an agent multiple. So that's, that covers the folks that are not teachers and some of the other types of employees in the school system. The second type, the last bullet, which the schools also have, is a cost-sharing plan. And what that is, is, you know, all of the employees of all of the school systems all across the state, all the teachers and administrators and those types of folks are in one huge pool, there is one liability, everybody shares in funding it, okay? You don't have your specific piece and somebody else has their piece, we all share equally in how it's funded. And what happens in the standard is that liability is gonna get allocated to you, okay? That, that's the big number, okay? And the part of the reason why we're here to talk to you is because, under the old rules, because you didn't have, you know, a legal liability related to that plan, you only had an obligation to contribute to it, you know, on behalf of your people, that number has never been in your financial statements, okay? The existence of the plan has been, you know, you could go look at the whole thing, you know, like what the liability was, but that number has never been into your financial statements. So when I talked to you guys last January as we finished the audit, we didn't really know yet what it was, okay? So that's part of the reason why we're here today. Okay. So what is a net pension liability? We've talked a little bit about this. So the way this is gonna work is the actuaries calculate the total liability for all of the school system's employees based on benefits they've earned for the time that they've worked, you know, up to now, or up to June 30, right? Then the fiduciary net position is the assets of the plan, right? So that's the assets that have been accumulated over the years from the contributions that have been made. And you subtract the assets from the liability and you get the number that we're gonna record, okay? So, that's not so bad, right? Not that complicated. Okay. So just to sort of sum up the accounting, the changes in that net pension liability are gonna be immediately recognized as pension expense, or they'll be deferred over time, like we talked about with the deferred inflows and outflows, but we're gonna carry the whole liability on the books at all times, right? And, you know, basically, what this approach yields is a concept where, on an annual basis, we're gonna actually recognize the expense that's associated with the benefits that our employees have earned in that year, okay? Not just what we funded, but what they've actually earned. So it kinda makes sense, if you think about it, in terms of an accounting model, that you would book those expenses as they're earned, you know, or you would book the expense associated with the benefits as the benefits are earned. But in terms of the budgets that you monitor, okay, like your operating fund budget, you know, that you look at on an annual basis, there's no change. It'll still operate on a funding basis, it'll only be when you get up to the school-wide financial statements or the system-wide financial statements that these adjustments will be recorded. So in terms of how you monitor, you know, on a daily basis, it's gonna be the same as it's always been with respect to the funding. So, um, oh, there we go. So this slide summarizes the plans that the school system participates in, you know, with the Virginia Retirement System. So the first one is the agent multiple, and it's full-time, non-professional employees. So it, there's basically a group of plans, most of the city employees and other localities, there's only a few localities like Norfolk that have their own plan, I mean, most city employees also participate in one of these agent multiple plans across the state. So schools, non-professional, and cities, and it's a whole bunch of individual plans that VRS manages on behalf of the localities in the state. And each one has its own liability related to the specific employees of that jurisdiction that participate in it. The only thing they allocate is the assets, right? Everybody shares in a huge pool of assets, and they get allocated their portion based on their contributions, right? And then you have the cost-sharing plan that we talked about, which is all the full-time professional employees of all the school systems in the state, and this one is unique to the schools, there won't be any city people anywhere across the state that are in this plan. And everybody shares actuarial experiences, and the assets and liabilities are all pooled, and then they're allocated to the different school divisions based on, in the case of Virginia, they're allocated based on contributions, okay? So they're taking all the contributions from all the school systems, and they're using those contributions in relation to total contributions to allocate the assets and liabilities to each entity. So, now the moment you've all been waiting for. What do the numbers look like? So, if we start with the agent multiple plan, our net pension liability, that's the benefits we owe to people that we have not yet funded, is $11.1 million. Our pension expense for this year, under the new standard, will be $700,000. We have deferred inflows, all those actuarial changes and other things that we talked about that are getting caught up and will come in over time, of $4.6 million. So the impact on the net assets of the schools for that plan is $14.9 million. That number has always been in your financial statements, something close to this, okay? It's calculated slightly differently, but fairly close. So everybody's known about that one. Now we get to the cost-sharing plan. Our net pension liability, unfunded benefits, is just a little bit less than $300 million, so very big number. The pension expense for this year will be $22.8 million, the deferred inflows that are coming in over time are $47.8, and so the impact on the net assets is $323 million. So if you look at the whole thing together, if you looked at your statement of net position last year, you would've seen a $10 or $12 million number, maybe, for net position. Now, we're gonna have negative $300 million. And it's a little odd, some of it is a function of, you know, the relationship of the school systems to the city and how it works. You know, you're gonna show up in their report and you'll see, you know, I mean, their obvious information will be right next to it, but that's, you know, that's the bottom line of what's gonna happen here. So, but same, same for everybody, okay? Not anything unique to Norfolk, but we thought, because this is a very significant number, that it was important that you get sort of an advance feel for what's coming. Anybody have any questions, or...
Well, I was gonna ask Dr. Thornton if you had anything else you wanted to add.
No, I would just say that, a couple of points. One is that, as a participating member of VRS, what Ms. Sistros has said to us is basically, for the first time, we, like all other participants in programs like VRS in Virginia, and then similar like programs, pension plans in other states, we're required to now disclose what our share of that pension liability is. In everyday practice, it will not have a budget implication, it's not saying to Norfolk Public Schools or Virginia Beach Public Schools that it's gonna change your budgeting going forward, it's not an increase, a new expense, but it's just a reporting requirement. It is not saying to employees of Norfolk City Public Schools or retirees of Norfolk City Public Schools or future retirees of Norfolk City Public Schools that your pension is in jeopardy in any way, any more than it was before we had to disclose this portion. And the other point is that this $323 million number, that's our proportional share of what is in excess of a $12 billion statewide VRS pension liability, so it's just under 3%.
That's right. Yeah, and it's, like, theoretically, it should allocate evenly to all the school systems, you know, based on the contributions they make, which are computed based on how much payroll you have, right? So the more payroll you have, the more of the liability you get, you know, on size. Everybody is getting the same proportionate share.
And we can't, unlike maybe our mortgages, we cannot accelerate payment. We must pay each year, our contribution is based on the actuary rates that are computed and adopted by the VRS Board of Trustees, but then ultimately, the rate that we pay and other state agencies pay that participate is determined by the funded rate from the General Assembly. So we don't have control over the rate that we pay, we have to pay what the actuary and the General Assembly ultimately funds as a funded rate. But again, it doesn't impact current benefits, so current retirees don't have to be concerned, it's just a reporting disclosure at this point in time. And it wouldn't, as Ms. Sistros said, this number is going to stick out on one of our financial statements because, unlike other school divisions, we do not carry the assets, the physical plant, the schools, the value of the schools on our books, they're on the city's books. So if we carried our, the value of our assets on our books, then it would offset in large part this disclosure. But, and the other point is that it will not have, I might say, it will not have an adverse effect on the audit opinion that we'll receive, we'll continue, we expect to continue to receive an unqualified, clean opinion. So it's a reporting disclosure, it's not gonna impact credit ratings that we're aware of at this time for the city, it's not a surprise to anyone, and it's proportional to Norfolk Public Schools.
Yeah, I mean, with, I mean, with respect to the bond ratings, you know, the rating agencies, you know, several years ago started factoring in, you know, pension liabilities because they weren't recorded on government financial statements, so it's really not expected to have any impact on, on rating agency ratings because they've already been considering it.
Okay, Dr. Gabriel?
Dr. Thornton, thank you for the synopsis because it was a little bit challenging to follow because this is a little bit unfamiliar territory for me, at least. I guess just to start with some of the basics, you, G A S B-68, just for our viewing members, can you tell us what that stands for?
Yeah, it's, it's Governmental Accounting Standards Board.
Okay.
Standard number 68.
Okay.
And the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the body that's tasked with coming up with and adopting all the accounting standards that are used in governmental accounting across the country.
Okay. And, and so, Dr. Thornton, as you had mentioned, for our current employees and our retired employees, there will be no impact on their pensions, and as far as their pay stubs and how they see their pay stubs, is there anything different on them?
No.
No, everything will remain the same. This is just, as you said, a reporting item that we needed to start doing based upon this G A S B-68.
That's right. Okay.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Ms. Sistros, for coming ahead and explaining this to us in advance of us receiving our full audit in December, because I think to mingle the two issues might've been a little challenging for us to receive it all at the same time, and so that when we see this roughly $338 million, we'll know what the source of it is. So thank you for your explanation today. And so in sum, I would say, and please disagree with me if I'm wrong, we shouldn't be alarmed, we are still gonna pay our ARC, which we're required to do. Our balance sheet will look different than it has in years past, but that's because of a reporting requirement, and we are to receive the audit in full in December from you all, correct? So again, you know, Reverend Haywood and I had heard this for several years now, and we thought, this is so significant a change, and the balance sheet will look so different, that let's not surprise people when it's not really a surprise, but it's just a reporting change. So that's simply the reason why we're here today.
And VRS continues to be one of the better-funded pension plans in the country. We've had some challenges during the recession, but some of the investment strategies and some of the commitments made by the General Assembly to begin to fund closer to the actuary rate has kind of put us back in a stronger position, VRS statewide.
Anyone else?
And my translation was because Cheryl tutored me pretty good, so, but that's it. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Okay, so we're gonna go back up to the top of the agenda, 2.01, and we're gonna catch up a little bit. So the main thing I just wanted to make sure we were reminded of as a board, under our Board of Distinction, that we do have this MOU, the district has MOU between us and the Virginia Department of Education. We know that we also have several MOUs that exist between us and individual schools as part of their school improvement plans. So I really just wanted to just kind of point out and take an opportunity for us to just refresh ourselves and for Ms. Wagner and Ms. Bassin, who are new to the board, just to also update you on the fact that we do have some responsibilities in terms of our work with VDOE from a board perspective. Much of it ties right in with the governance work and training work and questions that we've been asking and some of the accountability that we've been seeking, but the main intent here was just to remind us, we'll hear a little bit more from the administration as relates to the Office of School Improvement and where we are with some of our corrective active plans and other actions, but just wanted to bring that back to everyone's attention and see if anyone has any questions or concerns about where we are in our progress. Ms. Bassin?
I just have a background question. Are the Division of School Responsibilities that are listed determined by VDOE, or are they jointly determined with the school district?
That's the part where it addresses the corrective action plans and the professional learning plans and those things?
Yep.
Under the Division Responsibilities?
Yes.
Yeah. Those, were you gonna speak to that, or...
Basically, these are gonna be pretty generic to what all of the participating divisions are going to be expected to do if they're in some status of improvement that requires a MOU.
So you should've received an email that provided you with updated user IDs and passwords to IndieStar tool, and so if you go in that tool, you can see all the various plans, they've... We'll hear about this more again with the Office of School Improvement, but the ARC training and so many things are ongoing. It's just that as we were working with VDOE as a board, there were just conversations around what our responsibilities were, and so on the document that has the matrix attached to it, we did work on those, Ms. Doyle was spearheading that last year. We put together what our goals and measures and activities would be, and then we shared them with the state and came to a mutual agreement that those would be some of the actions that we would do as a board to make sure that our work in policy and governance was aligning and supporting the district's day-to-day work with school improvement and the action plans and all the other items associated with that. So, any questions, concerns, thoughts on that at all? All right. Then with that, we will proceed to academic affairs. There's a lot of different reports that we're gonna receive under academic affairs. I would just ask that we give the... I would just ask that we give the administration opportunity to get through the presentations as much as possible. And I would ask the presenters if they would try to hit the nitty-gritty and so we could spend time on, really give the focus on, once we receive the information, what the next steps are going to be. Many of the reports that they were gonna receive under academic affairs and throughout the rest of the agenda goes back to questions or requests that we received from school board members. So obviously, we know we're gonna get an update on our preschool program. We're gonna talk about our high school course enrollment and some of the sequencing and some of the findings and next steps that the administration has decided based upon some questions Ms. Wagner has asked and others have asked. We'll also get an update on our school accreditation results based upon the new measures that, that came out. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we'll get a review of the Office of School Improvement. As we know, we have quite a few of our schools that are under that office and require a lot of attention and work, and so we'll talk about that as well. So, Dr. Thornton?
All right, thank you, Mr. Jordan. The first information update that you receive is that in the area of the new state accreditation ratings. Since the board last met, we have received the, statewide, we received the final accreditation ratings. And also, those accreditation ratings reflect the new revised ratings, if you will, that are intended to focus on the improving and progress being made by school divisions based on the new rating descriptions, if, if you will. So with that being said, Dr. Bailey is here to provide the board with an update. You have several slides. Many of these slides are intended just to provide you additional information for your own reading, but she'll focus primarily on where, where we are as it relates to the new accreditation ratings compared to what we had previously shared with you as unofficial based on the old accreditation ratings being full, accredited with warning, denied accreditation, or conditional accreditation. So, Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and good evening, Mr. Jordan and members of the board. Certainly, you've heard a lot over the last couple of weeks about preliminary accreditation ratings. And then finally, the, the new and revised accreditation ratings for our schools. This PowerPoint will provide some detail for you. And certainly, all assessments have been processed, both online, paper, pencil, and alternate assessments. Testing irregularities have all been resolved. And all of our testing databases have been closed and have been closed since August. Just to recap very briefly for you, we have shared this information in previous presentations, but just letting you know, retesting, I mean testing for grades three through twelve and the end, of course, subjects. Subjects tested are the four core in reading, English, writing, mathematics, history, and science. And there are several new accreditation levels. Our benchmarks include what you see before you. Certainly, English is at seventy-five percent, and all of the other subject areas are seventy percent. We did have some tests eliminated this year or this past year, and that was grade three, history and science, grade five, writing, and grade six and seven, history, even though you see the benchmarks there. And then eighty-five percent for our graduation completion index. These are the six main new ratings that have been applied to our schools. All of these ratings also have the graduation completion index, which is just for high schools. And then there is one other partially accredited rating, and that is reconstituted school, and that is based on a conditional application. Most of these ratings are reviewed looking at the current year or the one-year achievement and not a three- or four-year average. You can use the three- or four-year average for achieving full accreditation. So as Dr. Thornton had mentioned, there are several examples within this PowerPoint presentation, but I only plan to go over one. And so I'll let you review the others at your leisure and then answer any questions at a later date. So this one that we will review briefly is the partially accredited approaching benchmark pass rate. This rating is also designed to be used with high schools to meet the benchmark of eighty-five for the graduation completion index. So they would only use number one. But our elementary and middle schools will use a criteria for number two. Meet the, meets the benchmark by narrow margin. And narrow margin is defined by two points from the benchmark. So that's very important to remember, two per point, because we had several schools who were close, but not two points. So as we look at this brief example here, we have our four content areas. Certainly, English meets the benchmark, certainly for previous year and current year. And then for the two areas that have not met the benchmark are mathematics and history. They did not, for mathematics, they met the benchmark for the previous year. The benchmark for math is seventy percent. But for the current year, they are sixty-nine percent. So however, they were given a designation of approaching because they were close or within two points. As we look at history for the previous year, they did not meet the benchmark. However, they did show improvement to the current year, which I believe is sixty, I'm sorry, sixty-eight percentage points, which they have been given the designation of approaching, which is very important, two points from the benchmark of seventy percent. History also met the benchmark. So when you have different designations, then you have to take the lowest level. And here in this particular example, the rating for this school would be approaching. So partially accredited, approaching benchmark based on the pass rates. All of these examples, as stated earlier, are provided using the GCI, which would then be for our high schools. So as I page through some of these slides, I would like to point you to this. When we're looking at the other partially accredited ratings, this is a guideline that can be used looking at where the schools may fall within the previous year pass rate. So what they are looking at is how have our schools improved from the previous year to the current year? So they have developed several ranges. If they fall within their range and they have, then you add four points to whatever they had in that range. Then that would determine whether they are improving or warrant. Okay? And so it may take a little bit more time to actually look at that, to actually apply it to some actual numbers. But we did have some schools whose designation changed based on this structure. So moving forward, what we have done is we have pulled this chart that we presented to you in a previous presentation to include the new ratings. And what we have here, we have four out of five high schools being fully accredited with one partially accredited warning. We did not have any of our middle schools to be fully accredited. However, we had two whose accreditation with warning status changed. One changed to partially accredited improving, and the other one changed to partially accredited warning. And even though those two particular schools had the same benchmark for the current year, the, the rating designation is based on how they improved from the previous year. And one school improved a little bit more than the other. And so therefore, they got the rating of improving versus warning. We have two middle schools that are, have been given the designation of accreditation denied, and then we have two that will be determined. Sure. Right, yes. The two schools in reference, both schools had seventy-two percent for English reading. Certainly, they're not close by narrow margin. However, for one school, they, the previous year was sixty-nine. And so they had to be within a certain percentage range, but they were not. The other school was, their previous year score was sixty-six. Oh, I'm sorry, Blair and Northside. So you can see that Blair had a English percent passing for fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, at seventy-two. Their previous was sixty-three. In order for them to meet the criteria for improving, they had to be four percentage points higher. So four added to the sixty-nine would be seventy-three, but they did not achieve that. They were at seventy-two. Okay? So if we look at Northside, they had to achieve four percentage points above their previous year. Their previous year was sixty-six. Four to that is seventy percent. Their actual rate was seventy-two, which they achieve above the seventy percent. So therefore, they were given the designation of improving. So it's kind of like a puzzle. Yeah. And a play with numbers. I did play around with it to try to figure it out before the ratings came out.
So, Dr. Bailey, as you had shared previously with the board, a total of six of our schools fell under the partially accredited approaching and/or improving.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Otherwise, they, under the old system, they would have still been under that category of accredited with warning.
Warning. That is correct.
So what it says to the school, the teachers and, and students, if they're paying attention, is that the state recognizes that you are improving at a rate that would allow you to come under approaching or improving, as opposed to just being warned.
Right. Yes, the whole premise behind the new ratings is to recognize schools that have shown improvement from one year to the next. And certainly, they had to come up with a range. And I would have liked to see, to have seen a few more points, you know, because some of our schools were very close, very close. For our elementary, we have thirteen that were fully accredited. Two schools changed to partially accredited approaching, and they were within two points of the benchmark. That was Little Creek and Crossroads. We had three schools that changed to partially accredited improving because of their improvement within a range from the previous school year. And we had two schools that were accreditation denied and five to be determined. PB Young also is connected or paired with Tybord Park. So we counted both schools.
A total of, I'm sorry, in a total of fourteen.
Fourteen.
Third-year warrants.
Yes. Yes, we also included for you in parentheses, the number three for all of the schools that are three-year warned. And then we have two schools that are in their second year of warning.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin and Dr. Robson, they had questions.
Okay, all right, sure.
So what this new, these new accreditation labels, are they, has the accountability changed at all?
Accountability in the sense of?
I mean, it's essentially.
If after three years, they don't hit there, they still approach denied accreditation?
Like if they're approaching for three years?
Right, what does that mean?
Does the consequence change, or is it still what it has been?
I was hoping that when the new ratings would come out, that it would indicate that everyone would start from like ground zero.
Yeah.
But that is not the case. Certainly, our, our third-year warned schools would be if they do not achieve full accreditation, they'll be, be in their fourth year of not being fully accredited and therefore accreditation denied.
Okay.
You know, they would be able to appeal that.
And, oh. And for Campustella, for instance, I know you mentioned for, for new schools, would that rating change for that particular school? Or how, how will that, because I see that they are still under, with the new rating system?
With the opening of Campustella as a K eight with a new school number, then the expectation is that we would apply for a new school number and thereby they would receive conditional under that?
Right, yes, because they would be a, a new school meeting, a part of the criteria for reconstituted.
Okay.
Then they would be then given that designation.
Not unlike we did with the opening of the Academy for Discovery of Lake.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Robson?
A couple of questions here. How did they come up with the two points being approaching or warning? Seems pretty arbitrary to me.
You know, they haven't really shared that.
Okay.
You know, I was hoping it could be three points, you know?
I can see a room of bureaucrats around. Two, four, what do we got?
All right.
One?
Yeah.
Let's go with two, okay. Everybody says two?
I think that's part of our legislative lobby.
Yes.
I'm sure that it was statistically calculated.
Okay, I'm sure. Uh, second, I, I have, I have a number of questions.
Okay.
Why was the Academy for Discovery of Lake would include it in the middle schools but not Ghent, Crossroads, or, or the Academy for International Studies? Because they all have middle school components. I'd like to, what's the designation behind that?
Um, it wasn't, it was just something that originally we had Lafayette Winona there. And, you know, I was trying to make it more up-to-date, and I put that there. And so I probably should have graded out because they have not had any previous designation, so I'm sorry.
Just for clarification purposes.
So it is in case that the Academy for International Studies, those student scores count back to the home school. It's not considered a, right?
Is that a program versus a school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But what about, where did the, the Ghent middle school, middle school score, so six, seven, eight? How are they?
They're a Ghent.
They're considered a school.
They're part of Ghent, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And my last question is under, I wish they had the slide numbers on them, but it's partially accredited improving school pass rate. They talked about the previous pass rate and the required improvement. If you're below forty percent, you've got to get fifteen points to be considered improving?
Yes.
Sounds like an unreasonable timeframe.
You know, I think that certainly the challenge is out there. And we did see some of our schools make double-digit gains. However, did not fall within the criteria to be considered improving. But we did see that type of improvement, so, you know.
Campustella saw fifteen, twenty points.
Right.
Across more than one subject.
We had Jay Cox.
In some cases, thirty points.
Yeah.
But yet still considered denied.
Yes.
Even though it's showing double-digit improvements.
It's our understanding that if you're, your movement from denied accreditation can only go to full accreditation?
That is correct. Once you are denied, you have to meet the benchmarks for fully accreditation in order to come out.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm done with this witness.
I'm just trying to understand, to be determined. Right, what we have done is we have applied for conditional status. And those applications are reviewed by VDOE, and then they determine whether conditional status would be granted or not. And so that particular meeting will take place this month at their board meeting. And so further detailed information related to that might, will be shared by the Office of School Improvement.
Ms. Wagner, you, anything else on that?
I'm, for this one, yes.
Ms. Doyle? I'm sure everybody gets it.
Sure, so my focus is on the three-year warned schools.
Yes.
And so my question to the administration is, what resources are we putting towards those schools now, both financial and human capital, so that we can be sure these people get off the bubble and become fully accredited? And I ask that knowing that some are very close. For instance, Little Creek is at seventy-four with a seventy-five, and they pass in English, and they pass in English. For instance, Little Creek is at seventy-four with a seventy-five, and they pass in English, and they pass math, history, science. Now, I know we're testing a different cohort of children, so it's not that, you know, Johnny from last year isn't being tested this year, and I know that. So you can't just expect equal to or greater, or whatever. It's dependent upon the population that you're testing at the time. So, what are we doing? Both human capitalize and resource financially to put more resources into those schools so that they climb that mountain?
Dr. Rogers is coming up, but I do know that, as we shared with the board on, in a more intentional way, tier-one classroom instruction, we're doing responsive intervention training. We've had principals in, we have trained a trainer, and they're going back out to the schools, and they'll be working with teachers. In some of the schools that are third-year warned, we were able to utilize more Title I funds. Shared with the board, the last, at the last meeting, that for the first time, at least in recent history, we are differentiating the Title I allocations based on higher concentrated area of needs. So for those schools that are higher, higher concentrated need, and their per pupil amount, which becomes the basis for distributing Title I funds, which becomes that compensatory support beyond what we're doing, gives those schools more resources. And the principals, when they prepared their plans, then they had the opportunity to determine how they would use those additional funds. So that would be generally what we're doing. Did we go out and hire additional staff? No, because I don't think we believe that that's what the primary need is. The primary need is to make sure that what's going on in the classroom every single day is well-ordered, well-planned, and well-delivered. And I think the, the efforts of Dr. Robert, Rob, Rogers and his team to really have that focus on RTI, that responsive intervention, is intended to help move us in the right direction. Some of the schools are in different positions as a third-year warrant, in that the hill that they have to climb is much steeper. But we believe that fundamentally, doing that RTI to focus on that tier-one is going to begin to move us ideally at a, at a more accelerated pace. Dr. Rogers? Want to cut across you, but?
You did a good job, Dr. Thornton, he listens well, so exactly.
He tutored me just like Cheryl.
Absolutely. So to answer your question, I think it's a great one. I think we, as a school division, we have access to a lot of resources, both human as well as financial. And part of the team's work is to make sure that we're utilizing those resources to the best capacity that we can. So in addition to what Dr. Thornton just shared with you, part of the structural model for making sure that we utilize the RTI process well is to creating this shared understanding of what RTI actually is, and to create a common language across the division. So we have three meetings set up to design that, to facilitate that process, the first of which is already taking place. And it's a train-to-trainer model with the staff who are most affected, particularly in English, math, as well as our special needs students, because that's an identified area that we need to grow in. When you peel back the layers, those are the areas that we need to get those third-year schools over the hump. So, in reference to resources, we utilize TPT funds, which is our Title II funds, to provide substitutes for those teachers to be trained on what RTI is, how to make it happen, and what does it look like in our building. So that's how we're utilizing those resources. I'm excited about it. The principals that I've spoken to are also excited about it because we have a common language that's going to be very supportive for them as well. And additionally, I'll share some additional things with you regarding what the Office of School Improvement is working on, the progress with those schools as well.
In all of our schools, we obviously have CFAs, DBAs. When will we have the first cycle of those so that we'll know of these thirteen schools, where they are and measuring their progress year-to-date?
Yes, you know, certainly that'll be close to when we're wrapping up, so it's certainly, it'll be hot off the press. But hopefully by then, we'll be able to also conduct enough analysis to inform you as to where our schools are. Yes, our, our DBAs are scheduled to begin within the next two weeks, and it runs a two-week cycle. And then, we give some extra time for our high schools to get through the process, because they do have a lot going on. And so they may filter into the first part of DC, but we hope to have a lot of information to inform you about how our schools have done. Normally, we've been doing CFAs on a monthly basis, but our CFA for the month of November will be blended in with the DVA. So it's only one assessment.
And of course, we can't just overlook the ones, the schools that we're seeking conditional accreditation for too.
Yes.
And so, yes, I mean, there's a lot of areas of focus, and I know you all are doing that, but we can't lose sight of those that really need the additional help this year, especially so.
One of, one of the commitments that we made in our application for conditional accreditation is that in addition to the monthly data meetings and shared governance team meetings that take place at the schools for those either priority-focused or denied schools, is that we made the commitment that we were going to also invite those principals of those particular schools in to meet with superintendent and cabinet to review their data. We started, and that's on a quarterly basis, so we started that actually yesterday. That was the first quarterly meeting with that cluster of, so each principal comes in, shares where they are, where their, the progress that they're making, and what is it that we can do centrally to support that work. It got a pretty good start, and we feel like that's going to help at least sensitize central office as to what we need to do to help the schools. So we started that process as well, from their data review.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Are they asking for specifics, and can we give them the specifics that they need?
Uh, they, yesterday, they were asking for continued support with training of special ed teachers in a collaborative model, some of those kind of things, and just continuing to do the RTI. They believe that the RTI that they received, the train-to-trainer, is going to be, going to make a significant difference. And they're going to begin to roll that out this month to their staff as well.
Ms. Vaseen?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Are the retakes still a part of this year's plan as well?
Yes.
Are they going to continue doing that?
Yes, the opportunity for our grade level assessments, students that are assessed in those areas to retake the test if they fall within a range. So that still applies to this year and this year moving forward.
And the next question, I don't, I don't know if you can answer this question right now, this is probably a bigger discussion, but for schools like Roughnor, for instance, which is in, you know, I think their third year of denied accreditation, and it also houses the Young Scholars Program. What plans are in place this year to start thinking about that program and its viability at that school? Or how it impacts the school overall?
Well, we met with the principal yesterday. Roughnor was one of the schools that we had in on yesterday to, to get an update on how they were doing. We did not get into the specifics of the program within the school, Young Scholars. But, you know, we can continue to, we can have those conversations with the principal as we go forward.
Dr. Robson?
If you want, I can, you'll.
So I have some questions, they all have the same logic, about schools that are two or three-year warranty. Those principals are, are waiting to hear their status. If, if we find that principals are coming and having requests, that certain subjects of students need extra time, more time, on certain tasks, will we be able to shift funds to, say, for example, provide after-school tutoring, Saturday school, class during the winter holiday for the students? Because, you know, I know that several of those students have a lot to catch up on. You know, when you're in good grade, and you're reading well, is that second grade, there's so much that they can catch up on. So I want, I want the administration, possible, that there is support that lies outside of the regular school hours to be able to provide that for the children sooner rather than later. Can we have a plan in place for that? And if we need to fund for that, if we're afraid of losing funds for that, then that's what the principals are saying, like, would possible to do if they're still in?
The schools still have access this year to their safety net funds and their SOL remediation funds. Many of the schools have already put in their request, and the allocations are being made. What we were hearing again in our conversations that started yesterday is that the principals and the schools will begin to do some of those other interventions, tutoring, Saturday school, this month and next month. They wanted to wait until they got their CFA data to determine what specific supports, specific kids needed or groups of kids needed in the months to come, leading up to and throughout, up to the SOL point. And like last year, what we found was heading, wherein the monies were available in late fall, they were utilizing those funds, but they, many of the principals said, six, eight weeks before SOL, that they needed more. So we were able to allocate more. So the short answer is, we've already begun those allocations based on their identified plans, and we would support them as we did last year if they needed more, once they go through the plan process in the spring.
Dr. Robson?
Thank you. Thinking long-term and big picture, can we use Title I funds or Title II funds to pay high-performing teachers to shift from a one school to another? Is that, is that legal?
I am not sure. We can find out, we would have to write into the application.
And the reason why I ask that is if we start identifying high-performing teachers in, in schools and offer them an incentive to go to the lower-performing schools and work their magic there.
I, I, I believe in the school improvement grants. That opportunity in the past has been there, but I don't necessarily know if going forward. Because one of the, one of the challenges that we have, particularly with school improvement grants, which are part of Title I, is that the sustainability. So once, if we put initiative in place, can we sustain it if the funds go away? And that becomes one of the criteria around which they may decide, as they've done this year, that we cannot fund that under school improvement, Title I school improvement. Because we had some specific initiatives for additional human resources under our school improvement grants, but they said we could not fund it because of the lack of sustainability. So if it goes away, the SIG grant goes away at some point, or the funding is reduced, then where's the sustainability of the program?
Anyone else? So I would just encourage again, Dr. Thornton and Dr. Bailey have offered assistance to us as school board members to get training on IndyStar. You also received login accounts for, for SchoolNet. And so, it gives you an opportunity to log in and really follow some of the progress, see some of the, see some of the plans. So as we talk about this more, moving forward, you know, we can access some of that information, you know, real-time and, and not necessarily have to wait to come to the, to work session to try to get them to explain that all. But it's a lot of information out there. If you go back in the board docs, the applications that we submitted for the conditional accreditation for the schools, those are available. So I would just encourage us to continue to review that. So as we look at the data, or if the administration comes to us with recommendations for changes, you know, we can be as up to speed as possible in those things as, as well. Dr. Bailey, were you finished on this piece of the presentation?
Basically, you know, nothing more said, other than summarization of the ratings. And I think that this concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton?
The next item, information update, under Academic Affairs, will be provided by Dr. Rogers, and that is would be the activities of the Office of School Improvement. Again, you have several slides here, some of the information you've seen before, so you can review it at your, at your leisure, of course. But I would just remind the board and really clarify for perhaps some of our newest members that the Office of School Improvement was created really at the, the request, if you will, from the Virginia Department of Education's Office of School Improvement. And they provided funding to get the office up and running last year. So this is the second year of the Office of School Improvement here at NPS. One of the primary functions is to serve as an administrative liaison between the Richmond Department of School Improvement and the school improvement activities that take place at Norfolk Public Schools. So with that being said, several other things that the office has to do in the first quarter of each academic, new academic year is to determine if we're going to apply for conditional accreditation. So we spent time with principals doing that, and of course, we've made applications for five of those schools. We also, the office has to administer the process of applying for the annual school improvement grants, which the office has done. And, you know, we're pleased to say, even though it should be a minimum expectation, but we were able to get the applications in and approve this year much quicker than we did last year. So those applications have actually been submitted and approved, and we're just waiting now for the Virginia Department of Education to, for lack of a better description, drop the money into the Omega system. So a lot of work has gone on, and now that we've gotten to that first quarter of CFAs and then the benchmark assessments that are coming in the next two to three weeks, then we'll begin to really get into the data analysis support for schools through the Office of School Improvement and members of cabinet as well. The final thing before Dr. Rogers takes you through the slides is that what we tried to do this year is really engage the entire Office of School Improvement staff at the cabinet level as we reviewed and prepared applications for not only the grant, but the conditional accreditation applications, to really have them engaged, so we can learn more from them. And then, as they work with principals, those three, we can triangulate principals, the Office of School Improvement, and cabinet, and the superintendent's office to all be engaged in this, instead of it just being done in what appears to be just one office with a limited number of staff, because we all are responsible for this work as we try to grow this office and make it much more effective.
Dr. Rogers?
Dr. Rogers, before you go, just like to- Ask again, I know there's a lot of slides here, and, you know, if we can, as we talked, you know, as Dr. Gabriel and I talked with, the administration and the put this together, we really asked for the, the nitty-gritty of the good, the bad, and the ugly. The data are what they are. But also, as you've heard previously, to the extent that you can also describe for us what we can do as a board to support the principals and support the, the staff, because that is a question that we get often. And so, to the extent that you can highlight those areas as well, be appreciative. I appreciate that. And while there are quite a few slides, the primary reason for me sharing so many was for your benefit, absent this meeting, as well as for the community, so that they have a good understanding about what the Office of School Improvement does. So with that being said, Dr. Thornton, thank you, school board members, thank you, cabinet members, thank you, members of the community, thank you. And I do want to send a special thank you to the Office of School Improvement. I probably have learned just as much, just as much about school improvement from them as they have of me. So they've done a tremendous job with that, and I'm going to breeze through this. So the outline of the presentation is, we'll just briefly give you a review of the turnaround principles, they're there for your leisure, the ongoing work of the Office of School Improvement, the professional development that's taking place throughout the school division, as well as the status of the applications that Dr. Thornton just shared with you. The seven principles that are here are put out by the United States Department of Education. So those are the principles that frame the work of the Office of School Improvement. And they focus on leadership, working with teachers, providing coaching, strengthening the school's instructional program, using data ongoing, and establishing a school environment that also focuses on student behavior. And lastly, how do you engage the community? They've identified five goals by which they also frame the context of their work, the first of which focuses on reading, the second of which focuses on mathematics, the third of which focuses on community involvement, as measured by the parent survey that we give out every year. The fourth goal focuses on student discipline. And the last goal focuses on the work that they do within the school division. And they pretty much have set a goal of being in every building that they're responsible for almost twice a week. And that's quite a bit of a visit, quite a visit, quite a bit of visitation where they are able to establish relationships with the building leadership, as well as the teachers in those buildings, to help them. Now, sometimes we confuse what a priority school is and what a focus school is. So I'm going to give you the read-as-digest version of what that actually is. Now, priority schools are, make up the lowest five percent of Virginia's Title I schools, and it does include elementary, middle, and high schools. Right now, we don't have any high schools. But they are federally sanctioned, which means that they have to create very specific plans for improvement. And that's what the Office of School Improvement are here to help our schools with. Right now, we have five priority- Right now, we have five priority schools, that's Campus Stella, Chesterfield Academy, Jaycocks, James Elementary, and Lake Taylor Middle School. Conversely, there's also focus schools, which make up the lowest 10% of Virginia's Title I schools, and they also have federally sanctioned activities that they must complete. And the office, we have one member of the Office of School Improvement who works specifically with those schools, and we have two schools, Reufer Middle School, as well as Tanner's Creek Elementary School. And we'll provide you with additional information with our progress on that at a subsequent, one of your subsequent meetings. How do schools get out of it? There are some pretty specific criteria that are set forth for schools to exit priority status or focus status. Luckily, we had one school that exited focus status. We talked about that school earlier this school year, and that was Bowling Elementary School. So, that information is also there for your review. So, what has the work been for the Office of School Improvement thus far? Of course, the completion of the SIG applications was completed the latter part of the summer, and that was a collaborative work in progress. I think we had everyone in this building working on making sure that we had the SIG applications completed, and they were submitted in a timely fashion. They also collaboratively created a scope of work for each priority school, which, which means that they have to work with what's referred to as a lead turnaround partner, which is a requirement. They use ongoing data analysis, and they monitor the IndyStar, which is the mechanism by which our schools are using as a means of focusing on essential actions and making sure that those things are taking place. And then, they also monitor the school's essential actions, and we'd like to bring details around their progress at a subsequent meeting, where we have a little more time to focus on that. They've been providing professional development in our schools. As mentioned before, IndyStar is probably not the easiest tool for our schools to use, and they've done a wonderful job in terms of providing opportunities for our schools to become more familiar with that. They provide feedback for classroom observations, and they work very closely with the lead turnaround partners. And one of the things that we've, as, we as a department have agreed to do is to make sure that we are working with and monitoring the progress of the lead turnaround, lead turnaround partners, as it relates to the work that they share, that they will do with our schools. I, in fact, have asked to meet with them monthly, and I have my first meeting with Pearson. We have three lead turnaround partners. Pearson is one, AIR is another, and then IEP is another. Please don't ask me what the acronym stands for, I have my cheat sheet over there. But, we have three that we're working very closely with, and I'm excited about meeting with the first one tomorrow. Additionally, the Office of School Improvement staff, they meet with them regularly, about every week, to make sure that lines of communications are there. And essentially, they serve as a link between central admin and school-based administrators. It's a lot of work when you're a priority and a focus school, to keep up with the rules and the regulations, and making sure that you're keeping up with deadlines, and doing everything you're supposed to be doing. And they do a fantastic job with helping to make sure that our schools are on target with that. We also have support from the State Department, who have, who's been fantastic in terms of providing professional development and building leadership capacity with our building principals. This is the second year that we focused, or have participated in what's referred to as ARC, which is Aligning Academic Review, which is an intensive study on the alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment. And from that, they give you, we receive essential actions, which are things that we absolutely must do. And participation in ARC was one of them. Now, all of our schools do not have to participate in ARC. However, we, as a cabinet, agreed that the training would be beneficial in building capacity for all of our instructional leaders at the building level, particularly principals. So, all of our principals participated. And so far, of the five meetings, we've had three, and all of which have been at the CROX Center, which is a fantastic facility for professional learning. The first session was held back in August, and we talked about data. The second one was in September, which focused on formative assessment. And then, most recently, we had one in October, and Mr. Jordan had an opportunity to learn with us for a while as well. After each meeting, it's a train and trainer model, so schools are expected to take the exact, well, not the exact training, they can modify it slightly, and do the same training with their staff to build instructional capacity. So, we're excited about the training that we've gotten there. We also have homework that schools have to do. The next training is coming up on November 17th, where we'll talk about formative assessments and how to use formula, how we're using formative assessments to guide our instruction. And we're also conducting observations, and pretty much the executive directors have been rolling with conducting those walkthroughs in the schools that they're responsible for, which with the, they're referred to as OPs now, they used to be contractors, Virginia contractors. But, anyway, we have members from the state, employees who help conduct the walkthroughs to provide feedback in terms of our areas of strength and opportunities for growth. And then, the last ARC session will be on December 10th, where we'll continue the work with formative assessments, as well as observations. So, it's an ongoing system of building capacity with our instructional leaders within the school division. The other work that the Office of School Improvement staff has completed so far this year, we, again, we talked about the SIG applications that took place earlier this school year, but we also submitted five conditional accreditations, conditional accreditation applications, and as Dr. Bailey shared earlier, we, we've not heard the outcome of those applications. The Virginia Department of Educate, Board of Education does meet later this month, actually on November 19th, to be exact, to determine the status of those conditional accreditation applications. And if approved, or if the applications are approved, then those schools would be deemed partially accredited, reconstituted. So, they have two meetings, the first of which, again, takes place in November, the second of which will take place in late January, where we will find out actually what the status of those five applications are. And the five schools are Azalea Gardens Middle School, Jaycocks Elementary, James Monroe Elementary, Norview Middle School, and Richard Bowling. The SIG applications, as Dr. Thornton mentioned earlier, have all been approved for all of the five schools that we submitted them for. And the funds that they will receive will be used to support the OSTI staff salaries, VDOA technical assistance that takes place, PD, travel, our lead turnaround partners, the three that I mentioned earlier, and the VD contractor salaries, which, again, they're referred to as OPs right now. So, that was the Reader's Digest versions of the work that the OSTI staff have completed to date. And again, at a subsequent meeting, we'd like to provide you with an update on the essential actions that each of the schools that are priority and focus designated have completed so far. Happy to answer questions?
Dr. Gabriel?
Dr. Rogers, thank you for the presentation. You referred in the beginning of your presentation to the, to the Office of School Improvement goals, and those goals were first presented to the board, I believe, around September of 2014. Do you think that those goals are still valid currently? And in working with the turnaround partners and the principals, do you think that, that we can, that these are still goals that can be achieved? Or do you think that they need to be restructured?
Well, I, I think that's a great question. I think that probably, look at holistically, because we have multiple schools, if you were to look at an average, we have some schools that need to move farther than other schools, obviously. So, I think, if nothing less, that we could probably take a closer look at how the goals are structured and identify sub-goals within those essential goals that more closely align with a SMART, what's referred to as a SMART goal, that's strategic and measurable and attainable. Because if a school is at 46% in reading, is it realistic to expect that they would get a 29% jump in one year? It's possible, but is it realistic? And that's a conversation that we had with Virginia Department of Education staff about setting realistic goals, recognizing that we do need to move, move the needle relatively quickly. But, I think, the long, the short answer is, I think it's realistic to, to think about an overall increase, but as it's worded, it doesn't suggest that.
Okay.
Got a question?
Goal number three states that by June 2016, 100% of priority schools will improve parent and community involvement by greater than 1/10 of 1%. Is that accurate?
10th of percent.
That's how I read that. Is that a typo? And how is that determined?
To address this, this is based on our climate survey, and we use a Likert scale for that. And so, I think for this particular category, I'm just trying to address it off the top of my head, you know, the point range might be from one to five. And so, you could get a 3.0 one year, and then get a 3.1 the next year. And so, I think that's how they're looking at that, as we look at the, the number of responses. Because for parents, we survey all parents, but we don't get a large amount of response back. So, would you like for us to look at that further?
I think we've talked about wanting to have more qualitative indicators around the, around the involvement. So, I know for this, you all looked at it in terms of responses, but I know we've talked about, as a board, what can we do to make sure that it's not just a, you know, number of people that walk through the door, number of people that sign in, but what's the qualitative piece of it? So, it'd probably be helpful if you can come back and let us know, what's the qualitative types of indicators we can look for, associated with goals beyond just the responses? If, if that's where I think you might be going.
Yes.
Did you have another?
No.
Ms. Bassin?
I have a, I have a couple of questions. So, the first one is basic. What, what do you mean by common language?
Well, for example, with RTI, is Response to Intervention, there's a terminology, for example, universal screener. What does that mean? What is a universal screener? Pretty much, it's baseline data. So, having the common language from one school to the other makes it helpful for when we go out and we have conversations about, well, how did your students do on a universal screener? And this is the baseline data that I used to assess students with. Tier one intervention, what's a tier one intervention look like? What's a tier two intervention? And what's a tier three intervention?
Okay. So, that's, that's a little different than what I was thinking that you were referring to. My next question is, how, I guess my question is about what the SIG funds support in regards to special education services in the, in, in the schools.
So, the SIG applications, as Dr. Rogers indicated, some of the uses, really, the majority of the funds, and when I say majority, anywhere from 75% to 85% of the funds support the lead turnaround partners on the ground, working with principals and schools every day on professional development. In the application themselves, funds are not earmarked for, specifically for unique challenges of students with special needs. If there is, we have Title VI funding, which primarily supports special needs. So, that becomes the, the additional support or resources for students with special needs. So, again, the SIG applications are not intended to identify specific subgroups, because the monies are earmarked for these lead turnaround partners, and they may provide some professional development that might address subgroups, but when the applications are built and designed, they're not designed to target a specific population within those schools. Dr. Wilford?
I think you answered that very well, Dr. Thornton. But, just to, so when the lead turnaround partner is on board and working hand-in-hand with the principal and the OSTI staff, reviewing data, when they see gaps or deficits in student performance, along with the principal, they can design professional learning. I say they can, and often, they will design professional learning targeted to specific groups of teachers and students, teachers who teach certain groups of students, so that could happen. We had that happen in one of our schools last year, and saw good results with that, working hand-in-hand with the school, as well as our central office department and OSTI to provide support for that school, and we expect good results for that in the future.
And I have a follow-up to that. So, I understand that it's not used for special subgroups, but how, another thought is, you know, we have students who are high achievers, or higher achievers, high ability students at these schools. What, in what way are those funds or the professional development being used to enable the teachers to work with those higher ability students, while also still, you know, raising the floor, so to speak?
And I would say, with the, very similar to looking at, of course, when you get a lead turnaround partner, and the focus being on turning that school around to increase student achievement, it's kind of like a bottoms-up approach, because that school wouldn't receive school improvement grant funds if it was performing at the level that's, that's necessary. However, when we bring a lead turnaround partner on, they do a comprehensive needs assessment to look at instruction comprehensively, as it's being delivered to all students, with the idea that it would impact all, all students. So, we don't just designate a group, going back to the, the previous question, a group specifically for the lead turnaround partner to work with, you know, unless we see, we see a gap. We may have, in our, in our priority schools, new, a lot of new teachers. So, we see principals steering, or steering the work of this, of the lead turnaround partner to work with new teachers. Now, that new teacher may have a caseload of, it could be a special ed class, it could be a gifted class, and, and it has, that's being led by a new teacher. And so, that teacher would get support to provide instruction to, to the students that they have. So, once we get the lead turnaround partner on, in, in collaboration with the principal to address the needs of the school, then they, they're there to, to help, help, help the work move along.
Now, are these needs assessments formal reports that the board has reviewed, or is it just?
They are reports that we can share with the board. That's one of the first steps that the lead turnaround partner will, they are conducting needs assessment before they do any, any work in the school.
So, as Dr. Rock, as Dr. Wilford said, the primary focus of those limited school improvement grant funds are designed to turn the school around, that's struggling academically. It's, it remains our responsibility locally to ensure that those other subgroups, whether it be our higher achieving students, get those additional resources or differentiated learning opportunities that they require. The SIG grants are not designed to target those specific groups. It's designed to turn the school around, because it, by virtue of the condition of the school's academic performance, then it's believed, there has, there's likely a high concentration of need there. So, it's on us, as a school division, to determine, while we are addressing the need to get kids up to a minimum bench level, benchmark level, then we have to identify the resources to get the other kids continue to move beyond the benchmark and those high-achieving kids. For example, a, as you mentioned, the young scholars, SIG money isn't necessarily identified to support that program within that building. But, if there's training for teachers that comes through SIG, that can benefit from differential learning, differential instruction, those kind of things, that becomes a byproduct of receiving SIG money.
Right. Well, the, I'll give you a reason as to why I'm asking that question, because we have several schools that have either gifted identified learners or high ability children, go beyond the number of, you know, gifted identified, who don't have, you know, GRT, they have shared gifted resource teachers, or have limited resources because there is a lower, you know, number of identified students, which partially is, I think, a reflection also of, possibly a reflection of that lack of in-house person to identify those students, and because- And because of the focus on the remedial piece of it. So, and we, we know, we, research shows that when you teach here, kids can rise to the occasion. And, and what we're seeing with these scores is how students are performing on a test, not to say that they cannot complete or achieve, um, these tasks. So, you know, I think it would, I think there are bright kids at all of these schools. And I think that can our resources, can the SIG funds be used to provide what, right now, what we are not able to provide because of the numbers?
The short answer, no.
Your short answer is no?
No.
Okay.
Because we have a responsibility locally to educate those kids that are at different levels of ability, demonstrated abilities. So, we can't, we can't utilize SIG money that's intended to quote, "turn the school around, get it to a minimum as a school." We can't use those funds in a targeted way to benefit.
But in theory.
Because it's our responsibility. We get into supplanting, just like we can't target Title I funds.
Right. I understand. I understand.
Add GRTs and things of that nature. That is our responsibility, uh, as a locality.
Reverend Awood in?
Yes, uh, I noticed that you indicated that there's ongoing data analysis to determine immediate support. So, I'm wondering, how does this data analysis, where is it coming from? Is this coming from Dr. Bailey's office or is it coming from? And how do these two offices, um, coordinate their, their data analysis?
I'll start and then, uh, Dr. Bailey can join. But, uh, we worked very, over the past year, we've worked collaboratively. There are, when we talk about data analysis, there's data at the school level that's, that's very, uh, that's constantly, uh, shared amongst teachers. We're talking exit tickets, uh, some schools, uh, when this, when a lesson is taught. And, um, the, the, um, the grades are, um, are marked and shared in the collaborative planning sessions with the grade level or even the department. And then shared with the leadership team and the, either OSTI personnel, the executive director. That's ongoing planning and, uh, data analysis so that we can adjust instruction if necessary, um, right away. Uh, when we work collaboratively with, uh, Dr. Bailey's shop, uh, in, in many ways, that may be reports that we have to share with the VDOE. There may be, I think about work with inputting, uh, CFAs into school net so that we can get real time data right away. She, her department, they work with us to ensure that we have capacity at the school level to, to, uh, retrieve those reports and, and, and more. So, there, there are school-based data that, that happens regularly. And then there is more incremental, uh, I would say, division level, uh, CFA, DBA data that's, uh, collected and, and shared with the school in, in, in the interim. So, uh, that's pretty much how, how it goes. But data is, uh, very, is, is constant in, in the school.
So, how many people are in this Office of School Improvement? It's, it sounds like a lot of stuff going on here.
They're here tonight.
Yeah.
Dr. Rory Stapleton?
Dr. Dara Bell-White and Ms. Lynn Stewart.
I see, okay. So, these, these, this funding can be used, thank you ladies for being here. Appreciate that. So, this, this funding can be used to help support technicians who raise, who, who analyze this type of data? Would that be true?
Yeah, part of the responsibility is they do work with, um, the team on data analysis and professional development. But again, that's a, the, the bulk of the funds that are being provided through School Improvement Grants go directly to the schools in these lead turnaround partners, these outside consultants who are there working with principals, who are there, um, providing professional development and also, uh, the VDOE contractor who works directly with principals.
Just one last question. So, a given school, about how much money are we talking about? What, what, what are we, what are, what kind of figures are we looking at here?
It, the funding has, across the state, I think it's safe to say that the funding has been reduced over the years. But, uh, in Norfolk, probably in the last five years, uh, I've been here two and a half, we've probably had in school improvement grant funds somewhere north of at least three million dollars across, and it depends on the number of schools that are in that qualify. So, you can have schools go in, come out, but generally speaking, anywhere from three to five million dollars in, in the last three to five years easily. In addition to the Title I funds that they receive.
Thank you.
I want to circle back and, and follow up with Ms. Bassin. I, this is a request and this is for the board chair and the administration. That is, I'd like a detailed report, uh, concerning our specialty programs at the high school and middle school level to make sure that we are providing them with the proper supports. It's quite evident that, um, and, and good that we focus on, um, helping the, our more challenged students. But we have to make sure that we don't forget about our high achievers, whether they're gifted, whether they're, um, in AP classes, uh, or one of the specialty programs. Because if we are going to retain and attract, um, middle-class families, we need to make sure that our, our, our programs are, are, um, well-supported to provide those resources for those kids.
Dr. Gaber?
I know that we're running close on time, so this is just going to be a, a comment and a thought to ponder. Since we are using a substantial amount of money and receiving that money in the form of the SIG grants and the majority of it is going to professional development, I, I think that we need to, and you might be already doing this in the Office of School Improvement, is to look at the teacher retention rates that we're having in those schools to make sure that the teachers who are receiving that professional development are continuing to stay in that building. And if they're not staying in the building, what are the reasons that they are choosing to leave? They can be, you know, any reasons. And then what supports are we doing since we're investing these funds into the professional development so that they can use these turnaround principles? What can we do to support them to stay in that building perhaps until they come out of, um, turnaround, um, school improvement status? And then would we want to maybe move them, since they've had the professional development, to another school to use those same principles? Again, don't need feedback, but it's just a thought since it's a good amount of money and good professional development.
So, I think we'll probably have to get the board's support to do a significant work session just on that because it is a recurring theme. We get our, uh, you know, Dr. Burson gives us updates at each of our business meetings on retention. We've talked about, uh, looking at policies around incentives. We know we have challenges almost by definition of any other priority and focus schools, not just in Norfolk, around the state, but that issue of, uh, retention and highly effective staff and seasoned staff and how you keep them there so that over this three to five turnaround period, you can really see that type of change. So, it may be something that we can just really set some time aside and get a good, good sense of where we are. The, uh, because of time, I just originally had this as a question, but, uh, something that I like for you all to consider, uh, moving forward. So, as we've talked about, the lead turnaround partner, uh, the Department of Education, Office of School Improvement, the Central Administration, uh, the principal, uh, it's a lot of folks involved. And so, we've talked about as a board, uh, you know, what can we take off the plate? And so, if it's some way that you all can describe for us, uh, at a future time, you know, just how much time are we occupying of the principal, uh, with all these different activities? And are there things that we can do to support you or things that you all can do with what you already have to, um, to make sure that we're not piling so many things on that the teacher is, and the principal is not in the building? And on that note, get a, get a sense of, uh, what percentage of time the principals are being pulled out of the building to participate in all these different, uh, initiatives and programs that, that we have going? I mean, the money is good, uh, but if we can do some type of analysis moving forward to determine what kind of bang we're getting for it or are there some things that we could do if we were to bypass it? I think we just need to have a crucial conversation about it to make sure we're really getting that, that bang for the, for the buck. Dr. Thornton, anything else on this piece of the presentation?
No, sir.
Ms. Doyle, anyone?
Good. All right, so we are, uh, uh, still going to try to catch up. We still have a lot of, uh, work to cover, uh, but I'm glad we're doing this because as we talked about in our notes, academics is where it, where the rubber hits the road. So, next up, Dr. Thornton, is that going to be?
Four-year-old, uh, VPI, and it's going to be a very quick update because the board received an update, uh, at our last meeting in terms of our efforts to recruit, um, additional students to participate in the Virginia Preschool Initiative Expansion Grant, which is funded through, uh, the federal government. And Ms. Fissner is here to provide a very quick update. Very quickly, um, our numbers have more than doubled since the last report when Ms. Fissner, uh, reported to you in great detail last, uh, time. We have forty-nine kids enrolled and participating in VPI Plus. As of today, we have a hundred and five, so we've more than doubled. But we still have work to do. We have approximately ninety-three, uh, slots that are still available. Uh, we are increasing our recruitment efforts, including radio ads. Uh, we also, uh, members of Cabinet are going out, uh, as well as, of course, Ms. Fissner, she's been all over the city, are going out tomorrow on a two-by-two walk neighborhoods and knock on doors and present the program to anyone who are answering the door. Hopefully, we won't run into pit bulls and all of those things. But we're going to have more boots on the ground and it will be members of Cabinet that'll be out there doing that along with members of the, uh, early, uh, early learning office. So, we're continuing to work. We've contacted some other potential partners to help us in this work. Sorry.
No, you're fine. You summarized that very well. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, Chairman Jordan, members of the board. Uh, like Dr. Thornton said, we, um, have done in two weeks enough phenomenal job. Our team has really pulled together. And between all the efforts we're making, the community partnerships that we've developed and our ongoing recruitment efforts, we have seen an increase of fifty-six kids. We have another twenty, maybe twenty-five students now that have just not enrolled at the school yet. But once they do, that will count towards our numbers. Um, and we do have the big campaign tomorrow, weather permitting. We'll be out and about at targeted locations. So, uh, we're feeling very confident, um, working very closely with VDOE on this as they assist us and provide us some feedback and some suggestions on our recruitment plan. So, um, I'm here for any questions that you might have, but, uh, Dr. Thornton summarized it very well. Yes? Uh-huh?
Thank you. Looking at your recruitment efforts, which are good, your radio ads. I received a call from a parent and I'll give you that information, oh, I forgot. This new thing we got here. Hopefully, you could hear me.
I can't.
He called a number from the radio ad. He said he called about four times and no, and got no response.
I'm not sure which radio ad that was. We actually haven't started airing that radio ad yet.
Okay, I'll give you his, his number. But there is a six-two-eight number.
Yes.
Okay.
And it could be just the times that he's calling, if everybody's on the phones or if it's during certain hours or after certain hours. Um, I know I work late and I can't tell you how much the phone is ringing at eight o'clock at night. So, it depends on what time they're calling.
Okay, 'cause he said he left messages. But I will, uh, but, you know, the radio ads, I mean, the recruiting is good.
Great.
But we just want to make sure that when they do leave messages that we, uh, we really do respond.
Absolutely.
And one other question, are we, um, are, are parents able to register children within the schools now or do they still have to come down to the administration?
It is whatever they would like. As a matter of fact, I was out at Pawper Hall today myself, helping in that effort. So, if the parents want to go to the school level, we go there.
Great.
Some of them prefer coming here because they work downtown. Um, or it's easy for them, they're coming down for something else. Um, we've met out at, uh, some of the community centers. It really is wherever they want to meet and whatever's convenient for them.
Good, thank you.
Pre-K is great. It's great that Norfolk has spots that are open and available to the youngsters that we have here in this community. I know personally in visiting schools and talking with many pre-K teachers and kindergarten teachers, kindergarten teachers want kids that have been in pre-K. So, I think that it's an important effort that we are doing here. We are facing the reality that whatever the data was that we had years ago, um, it is what it is. And now we know, uh, that we have slots that are open and available to the public. And for those parents who have gone to the orientations for the free pre-K for four-year-olds and may not have qualified, please do not lose hope. We are still looking at efforts to see what we can do to help get your child in Norfolk Public Schools. It's a great place to be. But first, we have to meet all of the very specific quali, um, qualifications for these federally funded programs. Um, our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. They provide good quality pre-K and I know that we're looking at the quality measures and keeping track of that. So, I, it's, it's a great thing that we have this here in Norfolk. We are very blessed to have all-day pre-K for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And, uh, I'm definitely looking forward to seeing those numbers improve.
Thank you for support.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
So, uh, sometimes I get calls about what's on the agenda and, you know, what may be more important than, than other things. Everything on our agenda is very important. But the, uh, high school course enrollment update is new material that I think is going to require some good time for some Q and A. And so, what I like to do is see if we can have, uh, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Bishop come up and give us our CTE or, uh, Career Pathway Presentation first because I think that is an updated material that we're fairly familiar with. And then after that, come back to the, uh, high school course enrollment update because I really want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to digest that and ask whatever questions we need to ask. So, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bishop, if you all be so kind to come up and, Dr. Thornton, if you'd like to introduce this.
All right, uh, welcome to, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Bishop. As board members know that, um, Mr. Johnson and many others, including the board, and Mr. Bishop, of course, have been strong advocates of, uh, the opportunity to develop a comprehensive, uh, CTE high school or Career and Technical Education High School. The, that traditional, uh, name has kind of evolved over the last several months. Work that's been going on, um, uh, since the summer, uh, kind of evolved. And the work and the name has kind of become, if you will, the Regional Career Pathway Center, also known as Career Technical High School. So, Mr. Johnson is here to provide an update. Uh, this, this effort has been in place for several years and it's continuing to build momentum. And Mr. Johnson has been out advocating with, uh, business groups, civic groups most recently. And the board asked, uh, Mr. Johnson to come tonight and share with the board what information has been shared with those civic groups and business groups. So, we're pleased to have Mr. Johnson and Mr. Bishop here, uh, tonight. And the other item that, uh, we want to, uh, remind the board and the community of is that not only are we focusing on the needs at the secondary level as it relates to preparing kids for, uh, careers and college through this, uh, concept of a comprehensive career and technical high school, but it also aligns and provides additional, as it comes to fruition in the years to come, to additional opportunities for kids as they now go through our elementary and middle school, specifically as we continue to program out the new Campustella K-8 school where the focus is going to be, well, I call it Campustella K-8, but it has a new name, South Side. I know I'm not being politically correct. The new K-8 STEM schooling in Campustella. When this concept becomes a reality.
Maybe you could call it South Side Pathway Center. Pathway is a great term. We've learned from talking to marketers.
When this, when this new concept becomes.
We'll license you that name for Campustella.
When this new concept becomes a reality, the thought is that the programming that we're planning for the new Campustella K-8 school that's focusing on STEM will really give kids a pathway to the pathway. So, we think this is, this, the synergy that can come from, uh, the new Campustella K-8 would prepare kids in that community to take advantage of this new school as it becomes a, a reality. Mr. Johnson?
I think it's a great, um, I have to say, uh, for some of you, I'm, I'm an old, uh, I'm an old face. I have new members and so I appreciate the new members, and so I appreciate the opportunity to meet the new members of the board and update you. I'm Tommy Johnson, and in this role, I'm chairman of a task force for the Greater Norfolk Corporation, which is an organization that's made up of the CEOs of significant businesses that are headquartered here in Norfolk. And there's probably, how many members is Greater Norfolk?
Approximately a hundred.
A hundred. And this was really an initiative that began when Maurice Jones, who was then the publisher of the newspaper, went on to be Deputy Secretary of HUD and is now the Secretary of Commerce. And this is really, Maurice was the chairman of this task force, and somehow I stepped in when he departed for higher career. But he's still, as you'll see, very much an advocate of this and a proponent of this. And then the only other prefatory remark I'll make is that I, like you, I spent about fourteen years in this room, and I haven't, I come back every so often, and it brings back all the times I sat here and listened to citizens speak or ruled on. So, I can empathize with the time you're putting in here, and we didn't, we had numerous sessions where we stayed past midnight on controversial issues. So, I know how it goes, and I'll try to make this brief, but I've been in this room very late many nights, so I do feel at home here. As Dr. Thornton said, we've been in conversations with the city, with the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, and with several of our leading major employers in the marketplace. And as we, as the career technical has evolved, the overall theme that we're hearing is we need a, the vision needs to be broadened if we're going to get significant financial support from the state, significant financial support from the major employers, and if we're going to get significant financial support from philanthropic sources, which is a part of the financing, and I'll come to those numbers. But as a part of making that vision, in conversation, really, the center will now, is now thought of as a Regional Career Pathway Center. And do I have the way to move the slides along, or who controls that, so you all can keep up with me? How do I advance our slides? Does somebody have a, does somebody have one of those? Ah!
Okay.
No, that's no problem. That's no problem. Now, let's see. Hold on here. Okay. And it's gonna be, the Regional Career Pathway Center is a pathway for both high school students and adults, particularly former military who are transitioning to the private economy. And one of the things that we realize is that we, this school really needs to focus on having its graduates achieve market-recognized certifications and credentials for what are called middle-skill employment or for further education. So, the theme is, is that this pathway, while it will be a high school that will serve students, it also has a very vibrant component that during the day and at night will serve adults, and they will really be trying to bring those students to the point where they have the credentials or certifications that make them job-ready at the time they graduate, or they can go on to further education. The first phase of the center will be a state-of-the-art regional center that combines a full-time academic technical high school and an adult program. The center, the campus for the center, which will be edged to Lake Taylor High School, will be the governor's, may someday be a location for the future Governor's School for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, and also startup businesses may ultimately be located there, attracted by the workforce that's trained there. So, that's the broader vision of the Regional Career Pathways. The site, as you all know, was selected by the school board hiring a consultant, looking at all the potential sites where there are high schools, evaluating them on criteria, and saying that really the Lake Taylor, I'm sorry, the, what have I done now?
That's not.
I'm sorry. What did I do? Center is the Lake Taylor, you see it there. And then, again, the center will focus on what are the defining industries.
Counselor.
All right. To the defining industries, let me back up one. And those are the ship repair, healthcare and health services, information technology, advanced manufacturing, tourism, retail. And for those of you who are not familiar, Kenyatta, who has been invaluable, has met with industry, has looked at, and the school will be organized with small academies within it, and then those academies will focus on these particular core employment opportunities. And the school's curriculum, to the extent it can be, will be designed with the assistance of and the participation of the major employers, like Centerra is already involved in developing a curriculum for its regional career, its regional nurse or care program. And they expect, if we can generate fifty graduates a year that meet their criteria, they'll have a ready job market for those. So, the idea is to really generate students graduating with industry-recognized credentials. We've asked New Bernou ship to similarly define the credentials that they're looking for in their graduates. The elements that are, I guess, to make it distinctive is it will be a regional program, and by regional, while it'll be sponsored by the city of Norfolk and by the Norfolk School Board, we will want to have at least one other regional school system participating by sending their students there. We'll want regional employers as our partners. We'll want higher education, either in the community college or the other higher education, as our partners in this. And as we'll see, we're moving towards recruiting those other employer partners. We need to have some conversations with the school system, how to recruit our regional partners of other school systems, and we need, and also how to recruit our higher education partners. But that is definitely going to be a part of the program. It's going to be a proven, integrated academic technical and high school on the Worcester model, which we know is a demonstrated, successful model. And then, it's really going to work in partnership with our major area employers, and we have programs of, that, of the type of programs will be the Centerra Regional Nurse Care Program, the Virginia Ship Repair Association, New Bernou Shipbuilding Credential Program. And as I've said before, the object is really to turn out graduates who've really got the skills those employers are looking for. One of the things that's become more apparent is that really the opportunity that this school is going to, excuse me, too quick on this thing. The, these are studies that have been done, and over the period from now, in the next decade, forty-six percent of the job openings will be in what are called middle-skill jobs. These are jobs that require training beyond high school, but don't require a four-year degree. And these are, these are jobs, and as Maurice Jones in the next section, in less than a decade, Virginia's going to need a million and a half skilled workers, and fifty to sixty-five percent of those jobs are going to be middle-skilled. And those are, that requires middle skills with good wages, career progression. It requires certifications, licenses, but it doesn't require a four-year college degree. So, building on that, the Opportunity Inc. did a study in 2012, and nearly sixty percent of the fastest-growing jobs in Hampton Roads typically require less than a four-year degree. So, that is, again, saying that's where the market is for our, for the majority of the students coming out of our high school, that's the market that is the job opportunity. One thing that's always a little hesitant about being too much the technician, but some demographic facts that are really worth focusing on that we hadn't fully appreciated, but working with the city of Norfolk and one of their consultants, they've pointed out that there's some really startling demographics, and people say that destiny is demographics. And what this says to you is, is that really, the number of people in the entry-job category is not going to grow significantly over the next twenty years. And what, the takeaway from that is that there won't be enough young people coming out of high school to meet these middle-school jobs. And that's why this Career Pathway Center needs to have the capacity and the ability to train adults transitioning out of the military and other adults. And if you look at these numbers, and I won't, they really are striking in the sense that if you look in the, from now until 2040, in young adults from age fifteen to thirty-four, there's, in Hampton Roads, they're projecting almost a level number of people in that age. You just wouldn't think that. You'd think that that's growing, but that's not the way it's going to be. And similarly, if you look in the twenty, in the category of twenty-five to fifty-four, that category is about stable, and the young group, the sixteen to twenty-four, actually declines in numbers. So, for us to meet this middle-skills job demand, it's not going to be enough to just train the youngsters coming out of high school. And that's why this Regional Career Pathways has a broader vision. That's really what the state wants to see beyond the high school, if they're gonna, if we're gonna have a real opportunity to get significant state funds here. Now, I'm turning now to, I'm preaching to the choir, but part of the rationale for the school is that today's high schools are mostly designed to send people to a four-year higher education program. Yet, when you look at the statistics, only about thirty percent of the high school graduates that go on to four-year, only thirty percent actually, within four to six years, finish that higher education program. The result is, people are being sent off on a path that they don't succeed in, and they don't have the skills to meet these middle-skill job needs when they, when they fall out of that path. Another thing that we all know is a lot of students drop out of high school, and while there's a lot of reasons for that, a major reason is, is that many of them cannot see any connection between the courses they're taking and the opportunities in the job market. And work-linked learning on a full-time academic technical high school makes that learning relevant to their experience. And if you look at what the success they've seen at Worcester, they have a one percent dropout rate, ninety-five percent attendance, and ninety-six percent graduation rate. If you go there, you actually sense the enthusiasm of the students and that they've got a purpose and they know where they're going, and they're engaged. And we have support from the highest levels for this, because President Obama went to Worcester in June of last year and delivered the graduation and made the remarks you see there, that that technical high school, full-time academic, is a model for maintaining America's competitiveness. And that is our ambitious goal, is to bring that similar model here. It is an ambitious goal. It should be a regional center, as I've described. Now, one thing that the regional center and the broader vision is, there's several statewide initiatives. One is called Go Virginia. It's legislation that has bipartisan support. It's going to make funding available for regional projects, but it has to be a project in which at least two communities partner in. We're getting good encouragement from the people who are very familiar with the Go Virginia, that if that gets adopted by the legislature, and it has support on both sides, so last night's election didn't change the outcome on this issue, that there'll be money available, and this, we may be a poster child for being an early applicant, and that may be a source of significant money towards the funds. The other thing is, is a Reinvent Hampton Roads Initiative, and one of its recommendations is a regional full-time academic high school. So, by broadening our vision and emphasizing that we can serve beyond just a high school, we hope to achieve acceptance in these types of programs. Now, I've been here before, and the project cost, we had a good study done by RMM for the school board, and I think they said, in constant dollars, the project was about an eighty-million-dollar project, but they noted that over time, that number's going to escalate. So, we're using, just for the construction of the facility, a ninety-million-dollar number. And in addition, there's land involved, and that land at Lake Taylor Site is probably worth another thirty million. So, you're talking land and building, a public investment of a hundred and twenty million dollars. The city of Norfolk would be making sixty million of that available, thirty through the land, or the school system in Norfolk through the land, and then the city of Norfolk, thirty million. The goal for state support is thirty million. That's ambitious, and industry and philanthropic. And when we really started trying to say, how are we going to get that, we realized, as a group, the city, your chairman, your vice chairman, Brad Robinson, who have been working with the task force, that we need to have a regional vision. Everything we were hearing from the state, Maurice Jones participated, he said, you gotta have your big employers advocating for you, you gotta have your big employers investing their money with you. It's gotta be regional. He said, if the state, and it's gotta be aimed towards developing this workforce for the middle skills, both adults and. When we talked to the major employers, like New Bernou ship, who's been a partner in this throughout, they said this has got to be regional. If we're going to invest in it, if we're going to advocate for it, we're not going to be able to do it if every school system is going to go off and say, we gotta have one of those. So, we hear that. And then when we talked to the Hampton Roads Community Foundation about philanthropic support, it was the same message. This needs to have a real regional component, and this will, although the heart of it, the Norfolk Public Schools are putting up the site in the Norfolk City, they're putting up the line, sharing the money. So, we've said through there, at least, there's about sixteen-hundred capacity in school, thousand to twelve-hundred will be for Norfolk students, but there will be significant room for other school systems who, if they're willing to participate and send their children and share their daily attendance allowance, we want them as a partner. So, that's where we are. I've turned it off, I'm sorry. Not very, there we go. We've been at this a long time, and we do feel, however, that we've got momentum. I want to, I want to say, I can't say enough about your chairman's support for this project and also for your acting superintendent. They've been participants throughout the discussions. They've been enthusiastic supporters, and they've been willing to say, we need to be regional. They're willing to be bold in this thing, and we need, we need that if we're going to get industry support, if we're going to get philanthropic support, if we're going to get state support. So, throughout this, the next, I'm going to skip over a couple of slides. These are our stakeholders. Those are the companies who assisted Kenyatta in developing the academies. You all have, there's a plan has been drawn for the school. You all have endorsed this project on two occasions. The city council has set aside a million point seven. And our next steps are really to recruit other major employer sponsors, our higher education partners, our regional school partners, line up funding from the state in this coming year, finish the design, construct it, and open it. As you can see, again, remember, Greater Norfolk is a catalyst here. We don't have any money, and we don't have any vote in this thing. But we are, we are, we're believers in this. We think there's a lot of, a lot of private employers who are believers in this, and will want to partner with the Norfolk Public School System to bring this to fruition. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to first give Ms. Doyle and Dr. Robinson and Dr. Thornton opportunity to add on. They really have been with this effort as we transition. I had the benefit of joining in over the summer and wanted to make sure we got this update because the last presentation that we had, it focused on the regional charter component. The advocacy is still there, obviously, from us for making sure that Norfolk Public Schools' children are taken care of and get the support that we've been talking about. But in terms of trying to make sure that we could get the funding and the business support, that regional component was a key in order to move that forward. So, I was going to ask if Ms. Doyle, Dr. Robinson wanted to just speak to that before we just opened up for additional questions.
So, Mr. Johnson and Barry, thank you very much for coming here this afternoon. I know you've done work since, this is five years in the making.
It's Tommy.
Yeah. So, Tommy and Barry, it's, you know, five years in the making, and as you said at a presentation recently, we hope it's not five more years in the making, right?
No, really, no.
And there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. It's demonstrating the next steps, or we have to align ourselves with partners when it comes to other school divisions, businesses, and the state. But what we're hearing is that there's very much interest in seeing this be really a model in Virginia that is not being replicated anywhere else. And it is a vision that can turn this campus into something And it is a vision that can turn this campus into something that all can get behind and meet the needs of our future, meet the needs of our employers in the community, and not just in the community, but throughout the Commonwealth as well. So, the data shows that we have this gap, and so Norfolk can really be a catalyst in helping fill the gap of these middle skilled workers, so that adults, military transitions, and children who are graduating from a high school have the certifications, the competencies, and the qualifications to either go to a two-year to get further, or four-year to get further trained and further educated, or go straight into the workforce and frankly earn a great salary. And we've heard that from Huntington Ingalls, Newport New Ship, and from others. And we know that there are several companies in this region and in the state who are really struggling to meet the needs of their workforce. So, this is really a great opportunity for not only Norfolk, but the region and for the state, and I look forward to getting the support of the local businesses as we share our vision with them, and get feedback from them as well. I mean, the whole idea is that this is not something we're creating and sharing and saying, this is it. We're asking for people to provide input and feedback, because they're gonna be instrumental in helping build the curriculum that meets their needs.
We're looking for industry to help build a curriculum, to provide internships, to provide apprenticeships, and ultimately provide jobs when we, when we, our graduates have the credentials they've, they've indicated they need. So, the, the major employers, we're talking the Centerra's of the world, Newport New Ships, they have the capacity to, you know, hire, like Centerra says, they could take fifty of the nurse, regional nurse care program of graduates every year. Now, they might not all work in Norfolk, Centerra is a statewide organization, they might get offered a job in Fredericksburg or, or Harrisonburg, but still, it's a, it's a job for our graduates.
And I also think it's compelling, too, that we're approaching it from a regional perspective. So, again, I just thank you, Tommy and Barry, for being here tonight, and I look forward to our continued progress, and that we'll share the updates as they come along.
Dr. Robinson? The, my, I first heard about it on my very first board meeting in two thousand eleven, and I was impressed with it then, and I'm, I'm more impressed with it now as it, it evolves and, and takes on its, its form and its shape. And we talk about all the benefits. The benefit is for twelve hundred students that'll be rolling through that program year after year after year. And it's something that, that I supported then, and I support now, and I, and I hope that we will work together to make sure, sure this comes to fruition. Ms. Wagner?
We're trying.
Number one, I think it's a great opportunity, and thank you all for coming. But I do have one question of concern that I would like to maybe incorporate into the program, and that is for students who may not be able to complete a high school regular standard diploma, maybe special seal. And I will use the opportunity of Centerra. There is kind of a post-secondary program for, for many of the students who are ID and who have special seal diplomas. And, and Centerra has actually hired some of these students in the janitorial service to work the, work for them. And these are students who would never have an opportunity to, to find employment. So I was just wondering, would there be a curriculum in place for such a student who may not be able to complete a regular standard diploma, AP diploma, or four-year graduate, but who could certainly learn a skill?
Yeah, well, you know, this is not going to be the exclusive program for job preparation within Norfolk school system. In other words, each of the high schools will have their own programs that some way lead on to credentialing for jobs. So I think there's room for the type of program you say, certainly in the school system, whether it's most efficiently presented here or presented elsewhere in the school system, is really for the board to decide as we go down that path. So, but certainly, that type of program should be accommodated within the overall school system's resources.
Bye, Gabriel.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting today. I definitely think that CTE is going to be a game changer for Norfolk. We have said that in the past, and I think that the regionalism cooperation, if that's how we're going to secure the funds for the program, then it, it's good just to have regionalism in general, and then to have the funding support for that is even better. My question to the committee is, as you're gathering the regional support, if there are concerns from our regional partners on the governance of the school and how that will look, to develop that simultaneously and keep us aware of that, because I know that we had-
We'll, we'll come back to you. In the end, you all are gonna have to sign off. We, we don't have any authority.
Right.
So we'll be back to you all once we've worked that out with the regional partners and say, here's the governance structure. You'll, you'll have to approve that. So, we understand that. As I say, we're just a catalyst.
Oh, I mean, and, thank you.
One other thing I want to say, for the regionally, it's really, it wasn't just about the money. You know, when people say it's not about the money, watch it, because as a lawyer, you know, it's always about the money. But, but in this case, it wasn't just about the money. What, what we realized was, is we were gonna get the major employers to say, all right, we're gonna help design the curriculum here, we're gonna create an intern program here, we're gonna have apprenticeships. The, the big regional employers don't look at this area, city by city. They really say, this is a regional job market. And if, it was gonna be almost, it was gonna be very difficult to persuade those big regional companies if this was just, if it wasn't a regional view for the school itself. So, yes, to satisfy the state, but the equal thing was, so when we go to Centerra and Newport New Ship, they say, yes, we'll partner with you, you're regional, that's as much as important as the money is, that the regional employers, and also the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, from whom we really hope will help us with the philanthropy. It was the same message. We like your idea, but it needs to be a regional approach. So that's, that's how we got there. It's, it's the money, it's the philanthropic support, and it's the employers. So, we, that, that's, that's, that's how we got where we are. All right, I really appreciate the opportunity. I hope I won't be back here too many more times when I'm not saying, all right, now let's vote on this and do it. Thank you for the time.
Just like to remind the board in closing, because we're gonna continue to have to discuss this. I mean, the governance model that you spoke of is critical, and in the other piece, I think that we talked about with the regional pieces, we're not just, we still have our commitment to our students in terms of what they are able to receive, but there's a whole lifelong learning component that's being discussed with exiting military and with others. So now, before, where you, where the initial conversation was around these high school students, now we're talking about high school students, exiting military, businesses being there, so all kinds of pathways for our students to get internships and exposure to a lot of other skill sets is now what's broadening the, the component. So, we still have our core, we're just broadening on top of that. Okay, thank you, appreciate it. So if we can-
You're not doing good.
Okay. I appreciate that encouragement. So, if we can, Dr. Thornton, bring back Dr. Bailey and discuss the enrollment item.
Okay. All right.
All right. So, actually, we're gonna ask Dr. Rogers to come up. This next item, final item under Academic Affairs, is a new item for board discussion, but it's an item that, that has evolved out of specific questions that board members had regarding, what are we doing at the high school level to support kids as they matriculate through? And they come through, they come to our high schools with varying levels of need and strengths. So, one of the specific questions was, what are we doing for our kids that are struggling? How are we meeting their needs to ultimately prepare them to graduate, to go out and be prepared for post-secondary career readiness and/or college? So, based on that very specific question, and really, concern as well, we did, we've done some work the last several weeks, since the question was raised back in the summer, which included working with our high school principals, really gauge from them what they were seeing as it relates to kids that are coming in, what are the individual needs of those kids, and what have been some of the strategies that we have put in place, and quite honestly, have practiced over the last several years to better position those kids to be successful. One of the things that, that we know is that one of the gatekeeper courses is in the area of Algebra I. So when our kids come to us, in, in some cases, they're underprepared for Algebra I, so what are we doing to get kids better prepared? Because that Algebra I will prepare them for geometry and the natural sequence of courses that will lead them towards more academic rigor and preparation for graduation. So, there are some strategies that have been in place intended to help kids, but what we continue to discern as we go through this process, we don't have a lot of answers tonight, but what we know is that it is an area we need to look at, because what we, what we're finding is that as kids, kids coming into our high schools underprepared for math, and perhaps in some other subject areas, that we know that much of their challenge is stemming from their challenges as it relates to reading, and where they are when they get there to the high school as a ninth grader, and what we're doing to prepare them through the middle school years. And to that extent, what we're doing to prepare them in their elementary years and early learning years. And all of that seems to kind of bottleneck once they get to high school. So then, principals, as we talk to them, you know, the kids are there, so now they've gotta come up with ways to try to help these kids continue to progress. And one of the, one of the things that we've been doing here, and it's, you can go so far as to say it's not unique to Norfolk Public Schools, but perhaps it's a little more concentrated, is that our kids that are struggling in Algebra I, those gatekeeper and perhaps geometry, we're having to, if they, if we assess that they're not doing well in the first nine weeks, the first semester, then what do we need to do to help that child to get the content to do better, instead of allowing him or her to continue on in second semester on a track to fail the class? So, individual schools, high schools have put in different interventions or strategies for these students, particularly in math. But I think what Dr. Rogers will also share with you is that, and what we heard from principals, this is not just about kids readiness. This is kind of an adult challenge. What are we doing instructionally to prepare the kids? So when they get to the high schools, you're forced to come up with these, what some principals have described as personalized learning strategies for the kids that are underprepared, not that they don't have the ability, but they just haven't been prepared. So we know that we need to look systematically at this, that it may be, the indicators may be coming through at the high school level, but those are just indicators of probably a much bigger, more systemic, I hate to throw out the term, problem that we may have throughout the preparatory years for kids as they get to high school. So, I said all that to say that tonight, we're coming to share with you what we do know is being practiced at some of our schools for what, for what principals believe is in the best interest of kids, but it has long-term implications. Dr. Rogers?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Yes.
So this is a multi-layered, complicated issue, as they were just trying to explain it to me. So I just want the board to understand that this is our first crack at this, because it's complicated. I wanted them to come. Ms. Wagner had asked some questions, particularly, I thought it was important that we get that on the table, so we can begin to align all the other things that, that we have to do, but I don't want the board to think that this is a one-shot at this. This is something that, I asked them if they could just kind of concrete it into a couple of examples that we could follow, and then continuing at subsequent meetings, be able to continue down that, down that path. I just wanted the board to be aware of that as Dr. Rogers shares this tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Thornton, Chairman Jordan, school board members, cabinet, as well as members of the community. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background regarding the high school course enrollment, and just preliminarily, this has been very revealing for me as the chief academic officer in terms of the programs that we provide for our students, and how we go about offering the programs in our students. So it's been really good for us to uncover some of the things that we need to have discussion about, as well as programmatically, and looking at it from a holistic, holistic perspective. I want to walk you through very briefly what we found. And just background information, we did receive a request to research our course enrollment, as well as the student supports that we offer for our students at the high school level. And what we did was, we looked at course enrollment, and we researched it, and it was a collaborative effort between the Academic Affairs Department, Research and Accountability, as well as Information Technology. We had to work collaboratively to get data and information. As we peel back layers of information, it was quite revealing. And what we did, the short version, is we looked at first and second enroll, second semester enrollment trends, and I want to share with you an example. And I'm gonna put, I was a science teacher by trade, but I did teach about three-quarters of math in seventh grade one time. So I want to walk you through a little math lesson quite quickly. This is an exact example from one of the schools, and it's a high school math example. If you look at the first semester, that first row, it says first semester, the number of students that were enrolled are two-hundred-and-sixty-one students. The number of students that completed first semester is highlighted in green, as two-hundred-and-forty students. That gives a difference of twenty-one students who were withdrawn. Now, completed means that a student could have earned anywhere from an A to an F. So that's all students who completed that first semester, but we do have twenty-one students who were withdrawn at some point in time during that first semester. Could have been that they moved, it could have been that the school had strategies in place to offer support for that student, and that student was in over the head, so they needed to do something different. So it could have been a plethora of reasons as to why those twenty-one students were removed during that first semester. Now, let's go down to the second half, separated by that gray area. That second semester, the number of students enrolled is a hundred and eighty-five. Now, through a normal, one-year-long course, you have a first semester, and you have a second semester. Well, a hundred and eighty-five is very different from the two-hundred-and-sixty-one that actually started during the first semester. That is a difference of fifty-five students. Now skip down to that second green box. Of the one-hundred-and-eighty-five students that were enrolled during second semester, we had a hundred and eighty-six that actually completed the second semester, which means that they either got an A or an F during that second semester. Well, we had one student that was added to, could have transferred in, or more likely moved into the school. So, we do have a difference of one, of fifty-five students. So the question becomes, what happened to those fifty-five students? What did we do with them? How did we support them? Why didn't those fifty-five students who probably started during first semester finish during second semester? Well, as part of our research, I want to direct your attention to the top bubble, if you will, the types of support that we'll offer for students that were experiencing some difficulty. Many of our schools had elective support classes that were offered during the semester, they offered before and after-school support, and particularly, this is in, in math. They utilized their safety net funds to offer tutoring, they had push-in, pull-out programs for students, and they often, sometimes double-block students to help them with some of the areas that they were struggling in. And some of our schools offered credit recovery. Students who are not successful during that first semester, so in other words, some of those fifty-five, and of course, some of those fifty-five could have transferred out, they could have done a couple of things, but what we found was that some of our students had their academic performance reviewed at the end of the semester, and it was determined that the schools would look at the best pathway and support for individual students in order for them to be successful in that course. And what that meant was, some of the students were asked to repeat the fall semester, that first semester, during the second semester. Some other students were asked to repeat the fall semester during spring semester. So actually, they had first and second quarter during the spring semester, and they were scheduled for an opportunity to have the second semester spread out over the next two semesters, the following school year. So in other words, if it was a freshman that was scheduled into the fall semester for spring semester, they had an opportunity to have that second semester spread out over an entire school year. And that's what we call, what's often called Algebra CD in many different school divisions. So the conversation that we had opened up this wide variety of practice, and procedures, and supports, and strategies that are taking place in our school, which begs a question, what consistency do we have in our school division to support kids when they're having difficulty? And as a result of our research findings, and peeling, really peeling back layers, and And as a result of our research findings and peeling, really peeling back layers, and as a matter of fact, one of, one of the principal meetings that we had, one of the principals said, this is my twentieth, you know, my twentieth meeting on this exact topic. So we've had a lot of conversation about practice, pretty much practice, and how we support students who are having difficulty. What we learned is that there are different pathways to successful completion for our courses, particularly in the area of math, and that students do arrive, as Dr. Thornton said earlier, at the high school level with varied levels of proficiency, particularly in the area of reading and mathematics. And that is not a high school issue. When we look at our data across the board, K-12, that's a middle school issue, that's an elementary issue. And it funnels when you get to high school, particularly when they start in ninth grade, because they've got to have algebra in order to get a diploma. So how, what's the path of least resistance at that moment in time until schools are able to figure out what exactly does this individual student need, and how can I support him or her so that he or she can attain either an advanced diploma or a standard diploma? So they arrive at different levels of proficiency. And then the other thing, the big thing that we found, was that there are various strategies that are being used from school to school to support individual student needs. So that begs the questions about our consistency and practice within the school division. So what are our next steps? We did begin meeting with principals immediately when we got the request, and I started asking lots of questions based on my historical background. And it's not a conversation that I've not had with principals that I've worked with in past, it's not a practice that I've not heard, it's actually a conversation that's taken place all throughout the state. And we do have our math senior coordinator here, who says that they spent quite a bit of time having this very conversation at the state level. So not necessarily it's a problem, it's just a matter of practice and doing what's best to support kids who are meeting difficulty when they enter high school. So we have helped several meetings with our school principals to, to discuss course sequencing. And that conversation has to entail not only building principles, but our school counseling directors at the high school, as well as at the middle school level. One of the things that I found was that we are lacking a course guide to help guide that conversation at the secondary level from grades six through 12. So that was one of the first things that I did when I came here, was to ask, what guiding document do we use to help plan our students' sequence of courses? So our guidance coordinator, Dr. Jeanette Martin, has been working to, with a group of staff, to compile a secondary course guide that entails all the courses that we offer for our students in grades six through 12, so that it does include course sequencing and all the courses that we offer and how, offer and how they should be offered. The other piece is to continue to work with a committee to review our secondary course sequence expectations, not suggestions, but expectations. What are the expectations that we have for our students in English, math, history, and science? English is pretty straightforward. You have to do English nine, 10, 11, and 12, and you have varied levels of rigor, if you will. You have advanced level, you have AP, you have Gen Ad. But math, you have multiple avenues that you can take in order to get students to be successful in algebra, which is the first course that they should have. Same thing holds true for history as well as science. And the state does not have a recommended sequence of courses that they would put out. There are conversations, though, in terms of what best practices should be for kids. For example, typically you find the course sequence for math will be Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. That's a philosophical thing. To me, just logically speaking, just on paper, does it make more sense to do Algebra I, Algebra II, and then Geometry? Because one builds off the other. I don't know the answer to that question, but those are conversations that we have to have as a school division to determine, what are our expectations going to be in terms of course sequencing, so that we can make sure that when a student enters ninth grade, that we've reviewed data based on the individual student's abilities and what they are able to do based on past history, and how we can meet them with success, given the resources that we have in our buildings, both human and financial resources. And then lastly, is to finalize the development of the 2016-17 Secondary Course Guide for students that are in grades six through 12. In past years, we've had a document that's covered only high school students, but in that we have so many high school credit courses that are available for our middle school students, I think it's important that we include students in middle school with the courses that they have available to them. And that's the Reader's Digest version. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that we have.
So in, in opening up the questions, I just, I think it's fair and appropriate to say that in addition to trying to make sure that students are on the correct pathway and sequence, that we also want to make sure that, that as we see students enrolled in the first semester and then not enroll in the second semester, that it's not creating challenges or issues as it relates to who's taking end-of-course testses, testses, who's taking end-of-course tests and who's taking, you know, SOL. So that is something as well.
Right.
That you all are looking at and want to make sure that
That's something that we look very closely at.
We can be assured as a board that we have integrity in, in that process, correct?
So questions, comments? Ms. Wagner?
Let me just say that I do commend Dr. Thornton and Dr. Rogers for accepting the challenge, because I have tossed and turned with this for, for many a months. And even before your tenure, Dr. Thornton. And what I see, as we're seeing, is a, is a challenge, is also a problem. It has been a problem, and it looks that at this point, we are beginning to start a conversation. And again, like you said, this has not, this is just not unique to Norfolk Public Schools. We've had other school systems that have been sanctioned for the same thing. I address this because of calls from parents, many calls from teachers, and our concern as a board and as a school system, that we do what is best for students. And that whatever our, our philosophy is or our techniques are in terms of diverting students, that we make sure that what they, what they perceive is not that I'm not good enough to do this, and that we don't make that decision in terms of what's fair, that we, that we don't decide that they cannot do this. So the other thing is that when we make decisions like this, in all fairness, let's make sure that parents are really aware and that we cover ourselves in that documentations are in those folders, that parents are aware of this, and that, and that they agree to, to what was going on. My big concern, well, one of my concerns, and I know it's the sequence and all that we're talking about, in terms of the math and in terms of middle school kids when they come in. How are we really looking at these students? Are we really individualized, you know, how, in terms of placement?
Right.
Because when they come there, if we know that there is a deficiency, and if we're really looking at it, then we divert them in the beginning into remediation or to other classes where they can build and not put them in a situation that at some point, they're going to have to be removed. And where, where, where does that put them in terms of their self-worth?
Right.
So
Well, part
Go on.
Well, part of the process, and I've now had the conversation with our, with Dr. Martin regarding the academic and career plan, but the state requires us to do a six-year academic review plan for each individual student. And within that academic career plan, their course sequence should be mapped out for all core content areas. And if a student is meeting difficulty in seventh grade, more than likely, that's not the first year that they've been meeting with difficulty.
Absolutely. So that's my point, that it's not the first year.
So you can plan accordingly so that the student is appropriately placed. Once they get to high school, they're in the right courses, so you don't have to run the risk of having to reassign or re-enroll them at the second semester.
And, and again, we can certainly be proactive.
Sure.
In terms of, of how we do this. You know, it brings me back to an individual, and it's passionate for me, who was redirected and scrambled at the senior year to get where they were going, ended up having to do a special diploma. Parent was very upset, and they had to come back, and we had to redo it. We don't want to have to keep doing that in terms of students. What does that do for the child? We ended up having to pay for summer school and to take the time to, to get the child where they needed to go. But you see that over and over and over again, where we've removed students, moved, put them somewhere else come the senior year. And what I've seen, parents that have called, they're, they're so hap, they are so happy that the, the students have received a diploma, because they're the first ones to graduate from high school in those families. And then only to find out later on that those diplomas are nothing. That's, that's heartbreaking. So I appreciate the fact that we are starting the conversation. I do want to see more in terms of the action plan and to make sure that we don't continue these practices, because we do hurt children.
Well received. As, as we said in the, in the introduction, this is a multifaceted challenge, problem, opportunity, however we want to call it, is multifaceted. And as the high school principals admitted when we talked to them, this isn't just a student problem or challenge issue, this is also an adult issue. Because we, we may, we may have to make some very tough choices around this table. Well, the board will have to make some very tough choices from a policy standpoint around, are we ensuring that, or what can we do to ensure that the best and brightest teachers are teaching some of our most challenged or underprepared students? And perhaps the equity policy will address that in some form or fashion. But if you know you've got kids at variance, various school levels, even before they get to the high school, do we know that our most challenged kids are being, receiving tier-one instruction from our most effective teachers?
And then our counselors are doing a better job of identifying students as they come in, so that we don't have to go, resort to these kinds of techniques to get what we need.
And it's easy to say, the most effective teachers should be in front of the most, some of our more challenged kids. Not to say they don't have the ability as a child, but they may be further behind. It's easy to say that's the thing to do, but to put it in practice and to retain the teachers to do that when they're so willing to jump from one school. So it's not that, the problem is easily identified, but the solutions will take some real courage, political courage, financial courage, human resource courage, and it's going to have to be starting at the policy level and just in time become part of the culture here. So the easy part is what we're doing tonight. The tough part is making decisions when, when we're going to be lobbied or petitioned that why are you taking from this particular group potentially and putting to this particular group? So it's going to take a lot of courage beyond just identifying that we have a problem. Solutions is where the courage comes in at.
Dr. Robinson?
Ooh, there's so many. So many layers to this, but this is not a new issue. This was brought up to me when I first joined the board on pacing and, and sequencing. This was well documented in the Council of Greater City Schools report to us that showed this is, this is an elementary school problem. This starts out in elementary school, and, and I don't know how much social promotion goes, plays into it, but that may be one of the unintended consequences, that we're advancing kids that are not academically ready to move on to the next level. So we need to, to take a hard look at that also. Better screening at the middle school level to find those kids that are, that are challenged academically, and, and instead of automatically enrolling them in Algebra I, let's make sure that they're, they're placed in the right spot. So it's a, it's a, it's a long-term, longitudinal problem that we're not just going to be able to throw money at, but we're going to have to make some tough decisions. But there's going to be some tough conversations, and there's got to be a balance. We, we have to, we don't want to drive other parents out of the school district as a result of, of these, our, our policies and our practices. Those are the unintended consequences of that kind of situation, just perpetuates the problem.
We've got to focus
We'll come back to you. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I guess one of the major concerns is that we, we are so focused on, on test scores that sometimes we perpetuate activities or things that are created in schools, and principals feel pressured. Teachers, teachers feel pressured to do things that possibly they may not, if we didn't put that kind of pressure on them. We've got to recognize that if a school is not accredited, but they have growth, you know, we've got, the media, whoever's on, whoever we're looking at, has to understand that growth is just as important as meeting that, certainly accreditation is the outcome that we want. But if a school gets from 10% to 20%, that's growth, and let's celebrate that, so that the kids will feel like, wow, we're growing. The teachers won't have the pressure, and the principals will not have the pressure to, to get involved in policies that should not be done.
If I may address that, unfortunately, we're mandated by the state. If we don't, if, if a principal doesn't turn a school around in a certain period of time, they're moved. That's, that, that's why I brought up the point today. If a school is at 40%, they have to show that they've improved, they got to move 15 points? That's, that doesn't make sense to me. But if they move five or 10 points, why is that not considered growth? So it's the policies from the state level that we deal with. It's not make an excuse, it's an explanation for the pressure that, that principals feel.
Then we've got to fight.
Well, I'll just, I'll just make two comments, but you're absolutely right. It's, the, the stigma associated with achieving a certain test score is very, you know, there has to be a level measure of accountability. We all agree with that, because you have to be able to compare how one school is doing with another school in a different state, for example. However, I think we, every time we focus our attention on scores and tests, we move away from, what is the child actually learning? Are we actually teaching them something? And so as we peel back this layer of preparing kids for just the basics classes that they need to do a diploma, I'm reflecting on my own experience with my AP courses. And, you know, when I took AP Physics, it was a very difficult course, and I had to take it over again in college. And it wasn't until the second time that I actually, everything kind of started to sink in. And as we look at these different layers, if we're finding with our AP courses that some of our students are in those courses, but they're not making scores that are qualifying scores, we might need to even look at how we provide a pacing guide to those scores, to, to the courses for students who, it may not click with them the first time, because we want all of them to be successful. And success is knowing the material. It's not necessarily getting that grade at that particular time, because that's a personal triumph for that student when they understand that material. So I'll just put that out there, that we might need to look at, at our advanced courses too, because we want every child to be successful. And thanks for having this discussion. It's good, it's good for us to do this.
Yeah, I, I want to, I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate your comments about, this is going to take some courageous conversations. And, you know, to piggyback on what Ms., what Ms. Wagner was saying, you know, we do, we have to fight. We have to fight to bring teaching back into our classrooms. And I think, and, and stop focusing so much on the tests. Yes, they are mandated, but we need to, we need to stop telling teachers what to say, how to say it, and let them teach, because they understand they're students. They, a lot of them have master's degrees. I mean, I, I sort of feel like we're losing, when, even when I mean, I, I sort of feel like we're losing, when, even when you say highly effective teachers, I don't even know what that means anymore, because that means that that teacher, does that mean, are we talking about teachers who are able to get that student to pass the test? Because that's not what I want for my child. I want him to know the material, I want him to have a passion for learning. And that's what we want for all of our students. And we need to get back to that by setting that tone, which doesn't cost anything. And we can do that. And so, I think that that's the kind of conversation we need to start getting to. And I appreciate that we're starting it.
And one, one last thing, Kim, just to make sure that the students that were involved have every opportunity to make sure that they are paced to the point where they will be able to march with a standard diploma or whatever is necessary. And that we set in place some kind of policy that we review and look at students as they enter into the high school, that we place them where they should be, so that there will be growth and that we don't have to keep shuffling students around.
Ms. Doyle, do you?
Yeah, well, I agree. One, I'm glad we had the conversation. I'm glad Ms. Wagner asked the questions that she asked. What excites me is that as a board, we've been talking about these things. We go back and look at some of the master milestone work, that we touched on these things. We've been working with the facilities planning and looking at pathways and what students are attending, what schools. I mean, we're having those conversations. We aren't going to get to the equity policy update tonight, but, but that, that ties, that ties into it as well. But I think Dr. Thornton really hit the key, and I was looking for my elephant, because actually, we're talking about the elephants in the room. But I think when Dr. Thornton and I were having a conversation about it, we both shared our personal experiences when we were in high school and how we were each, he was at Indian River and I was at First Colonial, and we both were having experiences where we were being guided into math classes that were below what our skill level was. So, looking at those things, are we finding males being directed in a particular place? I mean, so much to unravel. But I think being able to have the conversation and, and having the administration being able to do that research, and like I said, they gave, use one example of math, there are other examples that, that we'll have to look at later. But I think Dr. Thornton is right, is we're going to come back to us looking at those policies, looking at some of these recommendations that we have brought forward. And then, you know, I'm not so sure about what the blowback may be from parents, because part of the discussion that bothers me is kind of making the assumption that the teachers who are in the classroom right now are not good teachers. What we're, what we're saying is, is that we have teachers in some schools that are, have a certain challenge with the demographics in the school. There are challenges with the pathways that children took before they got to that school. And other teachers that may have a different situation. So, we have to even be careful that we just don't use a test score as the basis of determining whether or not a teacher is effective. Because we may think moving teacher A into a, into building A is somehow going to be some transformation. And we may have the right teachers that we need. We have to figure out as a board, how do we support that teacher and support that building principal so that they can do the things that we say we want them to do? So, I'm glad we got to this. I apologize for, you know, holding it over, but I thought it was something that we needed to really begin to have that conversation. You know, Dr. Thornton has shared this with Dr. Boone, so they've already started talking about it. So, this is not something that will just go away. This was something that we'll continue to, to look at. But, you know, we started off with our board of distinction and asking the right questions. So, I'm glad we asked the questions, and it's something that we can continue to, to work on. So, with that, we are approaching seven. I do want to make sure that, yeah, you, Dr. Thornton asked me about synergy and preliminary budget outlook. And I think those things can, if the board is willing, can be done at our workshop for our November 17th meeting. But I think something that is time-sensitive right now is to give Ms. Doyle an opportunity to update us on where we are with our legislative priorities and taking the legislator to school. And if the board is willing after that, I think we can close. I will also say, in your onboard docs and in your packets, you did get an update on the bring-your-own-device policy, on equity policy, on a synergy update. So, please review those, and if you have any questions, we can direct those to, to the administration. It won't be dropped, we're just not going to be able to get to all of that tonight. So, Ms. Doyle?
So, on November 17th at eight o'clock, we will be having our legislative breakfast with our local delegations. And we will be inviting those who are new to our delegation, as of yesterday's elections as well. And I think there's one new member, and that will be Steve Heretic from Portsmouth. So, and he represents Portsmouth and parts of Norfolk, so that's exciting to include him in our family as well. And the legislative priorities, you have seen as they stand today. They are still quote-unquote in draft, and I think we're waiting for good feedback that we might get from our delegates during the breakfast. I've also continued to partner with Brian Pennington, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the city of Norfolk. And he and I continue to trade information, share information, collaborate, and so on. And I know that education is one of the city's major legislative priorities for this year. So, I'm excited that we'll be able to partner, and our legislative priorities on education are aligned. So, the way we will be speaking in Richmond will be with one voice. And I believe there's a meeting in December that we'll be coming together with, with some other divisions in the Commonwealth to discuss educational funding. And so, I think hopefully with the governor's budget coming out with I N M, and with the major focus on education, not just coming from cities and schools, but also regions within the Commonwealth, that we will have a good voice in Richmond for people to advocate for public education, pre-K to 12. So, the other thing I would encourage you to do, and I'll send an email out on this, is just call your delegate, state senator, whomever you've aligned with, and invite them to a school of your choice for them to come and see life in the schools of Norfolk Public Schools, which is actually very exciting. You know, many of us go and visit our schools on our own, and to bring a delegate and a senator or a lieutenant governor is just fabulous. It really enlightens them into what goes on in the four walls of that building every day. So, I encourage you to do that now, now that the election is over. Folks will have a little bit more time on their hands, which is good. And they say technically to do it in November, but obviously be accommodating to your elected official's schedule as well. And I believe that it's it at this point. Does anybody have any thoughts or questions?
Thank you again. Ms. Doyle has been putting in even extra hours in coordinating that. So, we appreciate all that, the work and effort and keeping us on track. And I think we're going to have a very good year when it comes to our legislative advocacy. In closing, before I ask Dr. Thornton if he has anything else he wants to share, just want to remind the board, the week of November 16th is going to be a busy week for us. We have a joint meeting with the PTA on the 16th. We have moved our business meeting to the 17th. And then we'll be at the Virginia School Board Association Annual Convention in Williamsburg for the rest of the week. And at the 17th business meeting, Dr. Gabriel and I are going to bring forward to the board, actually going to send it out prior to that. But part of what happens at the VSB Annual Convention is they adopt their priorities. And so, they have shared with us some of the items that'll be voted on in their delegate assembly. And so, we want to make sure that all the board members are aware of what that is and have your feedback and input. I would be the delegate and would go and vote on behalf of Norfolk Public Schools. But at the business meeting, we want to make sure that if there's any questions or concerns about some of those initiatives or any new thing, that we would like to see them to consider just as the conversation we just had. That would be the opportunity for us to get our input into the statewide School Boards Association as well. That's it. Dr. Thornton?
Just thank you to the team. Several of these agenda items, I kind of pushed out to them really at the last minute, the last, part of last week, as we were evolving on some of the agenda topics. So, thank you all for, for producing as you always do. I would also thank the board for its patience as we've rolled out agenda items up almost till about noon this afternoon. We don't want that to be the common practice, but we kind of found ourselves there this time. And finally, I've shared with the board in the email today, and I had previously shared with the chairman, that Dr. Sherrod Williford is going to be leaving NPS. He has made the tough choice to return back to his home to, to address some things that he wants to do back there at home. He has been with us about two and a half years. He came to us. Obviously, we had lots of challenges, and he was the inaugural executive director of the Office of School Improvement. So, all of the pains of transition, he kind of absorbed those. But his heart and his passion for students and teaching and learning is without question. So, certainly on behalf of the cabinet and his cabinet team members, want to wish him the very best and thank him for his service to the students and staff of Norfolk City Public Schools.
Anyone else with an urgent matter before we go home for dinner?
All right, well, with that, thank you again. Sorry that we didn't get to all the presentations, but we appreciate the, the work, and we will get to them at the next meeting. Meeting adjourned.